I'd like to call our meeting to order and the invocation from trustee Helena Tidwell.
Good morning. Let us assume the posture of reflection. Father, we begin our day with an attitude of gratitude for our many blessings which have continued to pour down on North Carolina Central University. We invite your presence into our meeting and we ask your guidance as we explore and deliberate on issues we face this day. May we be guided by you and may all decisions and actions we take be a benefit to our students, our faculty, our staff, and all of us who work for the good of this university. We thank you and we pledge to continue to do things which will bring honor to you and to our fellow man. Amen.
I'd like to ask trustee Coleman to do a roll call, please.
Good morning. Chairman Holloway.
Present.
Trustee Abebe.
Present.
Trustee Allison.
Present.
Trustee Bell. Trustee Bell. Trustee Chadwell.
Present.
Trustee Coleman is here. Trustee Dickens. Trustee Johnson. Trustee Johnson. Trustee Mitchell.
Present.
Trustee Slade.
Present.
Trustee Tidwell.
Present.
Trustee Valderras. And trustee Walker.
Present.
Mr. Chair, we have a forum.
Thank you. As Chair of the Board of Trustees, it is my responsibility to remind all members of the Board of their duty under the State Government Ethics Act to avoid conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict of interest as required by this act. Each member has received the agenda and related information for this Board of Trustees meeting. If any Board member knows of any conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming before the Board of Trustees at this meeting, the conflict or appearance of conflict should be identified at this time. Hearing none, I seek a motion that the NCCU Board of Trustees adopt the agenda. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposes? Hearing none. I seek a motion that the NCCU Board of Trustees approve the minutes dated February twenty first, twenty twenty-three and March fourteen, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
So moved and properly second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposes? Hearing none. I'd like to recognize Chairman Coleman for the report on committee academic affairs and student affairs.
Okay, trustees, the Division of Academic Affairs has informational items only. The Academic Affairs presentation includes the following. Spring twenty twenty-three Eagle Preview, March the eighteenth. Event was a major success. Some one thousand two hundred and fifty-three people pre-registered and one thousand one hundred and twenty-two participated. Research and sponsored program updates. The Office of Research and Sponsored Programs slides provide a summary of research awards year-to-date on highlights of grants awarded. As of March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, the university received awards in the amount of forty-two million dollars compared to twenty-two million at the same time last year. Highlights are also provided for some of our dynamic faculty researchers who have earned grants. Graduate and undergraduate research symposium. NCCU hosted its annual research symposium for graduate and undergraduate students at the university. Student participants represented numerous majors across the campus and they presented research on various topics. Alum Dr. Brian Shakrufat, Medical Director of Student Health Services, provided the keynote address. In the Upper Division Academic Advising Initiative, slides introduce a new academic advising initiative that will provide centralized professional undergraduate academic advising and services to students at the junior and senior levels. The initiative will deliver advanced advising support, improved retention, graduation rates, and more. NCCU Listens Student Forum was held on March the sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Sessions provided opportunity for students to meet with the provost and members of his leadership team in a small setting to discuss their experiences at NCCU. The aim was to gather feedback from students to identify areas of improvement as well as those areas where the university is excelling. Fifteen students participated in this forum. Under the Division of Academic Affairs Highlights provides highlights from different colleges and schools including faculty and dean achievements and grants. For instance, the NCCU College of Arts, Social Sciences, and Humanities hosted the Dan T. Blue Symposium titled Black Women and Politics in Brazil and the USA. Presenters included Durham's Mayor Elaine O'Neill, Judge Josephine Davis, Dr. Delia Nick Garios from the Executive Office of the President of Brazil, and Monica Kunga, Council Member for the City of Rio de Janeiro. The Symposium was coordinated by the Dan T. Blue Endowed Professor of Political Science, Dr. Gladys Mitchell. The School of Education was awarded the Goodnight Distinguished Professorship in Literacy in the amount of one point five million dollars. Dean John Grant and Dr. Ogbo will develop the state's first digital equity and inclusion asset inventory of programs and services to help address the digital divide in North Carolina. Are there any questions or comments for Provost Jackson? Yes, trustee Valderras.
Yes, I just want to thank Provost Jackson for just the amazing work. I got to meet with Dr. Jackson, Provost Jackson, and Dr. Guzman, and so much of the team. Around just recruitment, around the Eagle Preview. So many events, and I'm just grateful for these efforts that we're doing to raise awareness of the wonderful resources here in our institution. The ways that we are just moving forward with research, with opportunities for community members to come in and folks from all over North Carolina to come and preview what we have to offer. So I just, I just thank you also for including us in these conversations.
Yes, trustee Mitchell.
Just a comment about the March eighteenth, the open preview was a great event. We were fortunate from Charlotte. We brought about fifty-five students. And so staff, thank you for well-designed. The class was informative. We had four students who had committed to NCCU prior to the trip, and after the event, we picked up additional eight. So great job. And staff, I thank you for your hard work on that Saturday hosting over fourteen hundred potential Eagles here. Thank you.
Are there any additional questions or comments for Provost Jackson? Here, Mr. Chair, this concludes my report from the Academic Affairs. I still have students. I miss all of you too. All right, the report on student affairs. Trustees, the Division of Student Affairs has informational items only. Highlights of the Division of Academic Affairs Report include the following. The results of the SGA and Royal Court election results listed. The SGA Government Association Student Body President Cameron Emery, Student Body Vice President Amaya Ness Smith, Senior Class President Jessella Gayman, Senior Class Senator Akayla Frazier, Senior Class Senator Atella Salmon, Junior Class President Chase Bowman, Junior Class Senator Ayana Por, Sophomore Class President Emmanuel Davis, Sophomore Class Vice President Nicholas Green, Sophomore Class Senator Sterling Elliott, and Sophomore Class Senator Miles King. The Royal Court includes Ms. NCCU Gabriela Ross and Mr. NCCU Gabrielle Basin, Ms. Senior Kendall Mahone, Mr. Senior Gerard Dupins, Ms. Junior Delia Martin, and Mr. Junior Terry Morrison Jr., Ms. Sophomore Taysha Johnson, and Mr. Sophomore Therese Horton. The speech, Student Health Wellness Updates. Spring twenty twenty-three, the Student Health Center utilization numbers, Counseling Centers, student visits, and primary presenting issues, mental health initiatives to include NCCU Collaborative Step Model, Mental Health First Aid, and Tao Connect. The Office of Health Promotion and Education Eagle Fit Program Updates and com.com app rollout and HIV/STI Education and Sexual Literacy Survey and Outreach. The Student Accessibility Services accomplishments including one hundred thousand in scholarship support from the PepsiCo Foundation, Second Annual Twenty Twenty-three Accessibility Summit, and the Second Annual Trio Student Access and Success Conference. First Scholar's Designation Trio Summer Leadership Academy and two new trio Upward Round Grants funded in the amount of two point eight seven million over five years. Rec Will Participant Numbers and External Partnership with the Black Collegiate Gaming Association to host the Black College Con Summit. Charles Jenkins, the NCCU Career and Professional Center Director, has been appointed to the National Association of Colleges and Employees Board of Directors. With this appointment, Jennings becomes the only director from a HBCU on the NACE Board of Directors. Student Orientation Advising and Registration Numbers as of March the twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. New first-time students, seven hundred and eighty-five. Transfer, thirty-seven, or total of eight hundred and twenty-two. I know item is centralizing grand, you centralizing grand U conference. In twenty nineteen, the NCCU Division of Student Affairs began hosting a one-day marketing and communications conference to highlight all aspects of the industry to NCCU students. This year's conference will be held on Saturday, April twenty-second, and will be open to NCCU faculty, staff, and students. Are there questions, concerns, or comments for Vice Chancellor Coleman related to this presentation? Trustee Mitchell.
Just one comment. I think last night at the chancellor reception, we had the pleasure to meet Mr. Hamilton, who won first place in the PNC Pitch Competition. Think he's a rising sophomore from Charlotte. So, Dr. Coleman, thank you once again for recognizing, making sure our students can be seen on a national level. Thank you.
Very impressive young man, yes. If there are no further comments, Mr. Chair, this does conclude my report.
I do have one. As we look at the number of students that are for summer school, how does that look relative to what we had last year?
Summer school for students last year, but we no longer have the HERF funding, so the numbers align more closely with where we were in the summer of twenty twenty as opposed to the last couple of years.
We are trending, you know, with our normal summer school sessions. So the infusion of the HERF fund that paid for all students is gone. And so we are back to our traditional regular summer that students do pay for. So it's not really down. We're just back to where we were trending.
Right, right, right. Or since we asked about the summer, what about the fall? We trending okay there?
Yeah, so we are actually trending ahead in terms of our fall numbers. We are just based on some data as of April tenth in terms of our enrollment deposits. We had twelve hundred and thirty-nine versus eight hundred and thirty-three as of April tenth. And in terms of housing deposits, they are up nine hundred and fifty-four versus two hundred and five last year because we didn't open a housing deposit portal until much later. So we're doing much better.
I need to also underscore that, that, that point as well. When it comes to enrollment, there are a number of things that I want the board to consider and to be aware of. One, the out-of-state. Many of you are aware of the exposure that we got from the football championship and all of that. And our application actually skyrocketed. I think to the tune of, we've admitted more than eight thousand out-of-state students, but we can only yield three hundred and seventy-seven. So as of this moment, we've already met our out-of-state cap. And so all those students cannot be admitted here. As far as in-state is concerned, that is where we've had the challenge because everybody in the state, all seventeen campuses, I juxtapose them for the same in-state students. And we all know the challenge with that, the decline of in-state high school graduates and all of that. Right there, because we've deployed a number of new strategies, including the things that you've already mentioned here. We see a trend in terms of students paying enrollment deposit, housing deposit. But we cannot for sure say yet what is going to be until we see the melt. I don't want to provide any false hope. There are two things that we're looking at right now. Some of the students who have paid enrollment deposits. They may have also paid enrollment deposits in other schools. If they have not paid a housing deposit, that means they are waiting to see what other schools are going to give them in terms of scholarship and all of that. But the tracking right now is good. We have to keep up the effort that we're making, but we cannot for sure yet say that, you know, this is where we are until we actually know the melt. You know exactly what we went through last year. But there is a there's an improvement this year going forward. But we shall see once we get to what the melt looks like. Our hope is that we can attract more in-state students than we have in the past years. And you also know, because this is very important for the board to know. We are also competing with three, four schools now that do have the five hundred dollars NC promise. That is Pembroke, Western Carolina, Fayette State, and Elizabeth City. Many of the students that we've admitted now, even some who have paid the enrollment deposit, may still end up there. So these are some of the constraints. It's not that we're not finding the numbers, but there are so many constraints, and I want the board to understand that as we begin to look at the fall.
All right, trustee Tidwell and then trustee Slade.
Yes, in communicating with the students' applicants, are we clear and are we doing it in a fashion that they leave when they are told perhaps that they're on the waitlist? That they clearly understand and as well the process so that they know that if they have done their enrollment deposit, that that does not assure that they're placed as soon as they need to go ahead and commit and pay the housing deposit. Is that clear to those students?
We're doing that now. We haven't, we haven't always done that in the past. But it's, it's, it's one of the changes that we've made this semester and moving forward. The question that you raised there, trustee Tua, is a very, very important question. When you have eight thousand students you've admitted out of state and you only have three hundred and seventy-seven seats, we have to gamble a bit. We have to admit more than the three seventy-seven because of the melt that we may experience. But at the same time, when we put the students on waiting list, it can also backfire on us. Because if we put them on waiting list and we don't get back to them on time, that gives us a bad reputation out there. So this is very tricky in how we do that. So what we have been doing now, we've actually combined in the letter of admission, we've combined the language in there that if you've been admitted, you need to pay your enrollment deposit and your housing deposit in order to grant you a space. If you only pay one, it does not grant you space. We're doing that now. The waiting list that we are also using now is a little bit of a tricky thing because we can't put them on waiting list too long before we release them. In fact, I'm not in favor of putting too many students on waiting list paper because we know that we cannot meet them. And so, and I'm saying this because it is becoming a challenge for all of us. And if you have an opportunity to speak at the national state level, these are some of the things that we need to begin to bring to the attention of our lawmakers. Our institutions, especially here, we have the capacity to grow. And we are looking at students, but there are so many constraints now, particularly when it relates to out-of-state. And as I've said before, we have not never disadvantaged any in-state student that is qualified to come into NCCU. If they meet the MCR, which is the minimum cost requirement, the MER, which is the minimum admission requirement, they are admitted unless they choose not to come. So that is the message that we're really getting to people, that we have, we're not throwing out in-state students. And it would be really nice if we can have the cap removed. But that is a legislative action. It's going to require, it's not even the USC system. It is a legislative mandate that we are delivering. But back to your question, yes, we are telling all out-of-state students who want to come here now, that as soon as you get to admission, pay all the deposits that are required. Some of them are playing games. They'll pay, they'll pay one, and they'll sit around and try to see what they get from other schools. And by the time they come around to it, we've made our quota. That's, that's the kind of, the ones that will call you late in April and say, well, they, you know, they put me on this and that, and they didn't admit me. It's because they didn't pay me what they need to pay right away. But that message is going out.
Trustee Slade.
Just speaking to the chancellor's recent point, I was involved last year in calling students who had applied, been accepted. And in some cases, they had paid all the deposits and elected to go to other places. These, these people are very strategic in how they approach this. So don't, I guess they'll hold it against them, though they're being taught to think. But same time, just realize the fact that you've got their money does not mean you've got them at all. And that's just a real-world thing. Second point I'd make is chancellor, you talked about the strategy that we have in place. I guess like you, I read articles that talk about the declining, especially minority population of people going to college. You hear all the thing about college debt and how bad it is and how you can't get relief from it. So a lot of potential students are opting for two-year schools. Like trustee Mitchell, I work hard to bring students here. And it's very rewarding, but I guess I'd like to know what strategies we have in place so we can help you to address that, that issue because it is an issue. And if we don't do anything, we will be left behind. So if there is an overt strategy as a trustee, I would love to know it so I can get behind it and support it.
Thank you, trustee Slade. And that's a very good question, and I'm so glad that we're having this conversation. I want you to know that the enrollment issues that were happening in North Carolina in particular, HBCUs, are only for HBCUs in North Carolina. Because some of the eight thousand students that couldn't get to us, they go to places like Howard, Tennessee State, and they are experiencing a surge in their enrollment. So that's, that's a North Carolina issue. But back to the strategy question, some of the things that we're doing now, and we've checked this, it's, it's, it's something that is allowed. We are suggesting to students from out-of-states, if they want to come to us, they don't get in the first time, they can go ahead and take one or two courses, you know, in a community college or somewhere, and then follow semester, they can come in as a transfer student because there are no caps on transfer students. So we do encourage students to do that. And our admission team are telling all those students who cannot get in that if you want to really come to us, go take a course or two and then come back next semester and transfer in, you're still gonna be able to get in. That is one. The other strategy that I think we can begin to look at, which we've already begun to approach here, is that the retail recruitment that we have not done here in the past. And I have to give credit to Mr. Bailey openly. And then, you know, that man is, 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 is doing the work. He is in every county which we've been suggesting before. Even as competitive as it is, if we are doing retail recruitment, we are going to these counties, we're going to the high schools, we're meeting with alum like you, and we're holding sessions as we did in Charlotte and Fayetteville last year, and we've already begun. That is also going to help position NCCU because sometimes they want to see and feel and touch people from the university. So that is one. So I would say to you, your role as alum in your counties, in the high schools, in communities, talking about things that we've done here is really key and is going to help us a great deal. There are students who still are looking for the brand, even though they can give five hundred dollars somewhere else. There are students who still are looking for the brand, even though they can give $500 somewhere else. But they still prefer the, the brand as they come around. Example is the, the preview that you, you, you mentioned that brought in 1,400 students to this campus. So unless we have a lot of money, trustee slate, that we can throw scholarships in there. That is the part of here right here. If we can raise a lot of money, that we can compete, you know, when we see students who have the, the, the record that we want, we give them enough money very early on and they can, they can make a quick decision. But when, when, the, the other thing, what, the other thing that I've been challenging our team is to also in the data that they are securing, to find out where we are in the students' desire. Are we number one? Are we number two? Are we number three? We need to know that because students do have their ranks and they would apply to all three. And some would actually get into option two to try to transfer to option one. They do that too. So we're trying to figure out very early on to find out where we are in the students' choice. If a student says, well, NCCU is my second choice, then we need to not spend too much time through money at a student that says, NCCU is my second option. Or student says, NCCU is my first option. Even if they don't have a 4.0, for me, that's where we ought to be putting our scholarships. Because the students who list us as option two and option three are likely not to come. This is where data is very important for us. Our option one, we should give them all the money that we can find and everything and get them because we're a number one choice. But in the past, we've always spent time on option two, option three. And they're not, it's not a very good strategy for us. So those are the things that we're challenging our, our admission team to also be able to know. Because when they file their admission, they, on, on the, on the forms that they use, they do put these options there. And I think our energy should be going towards those students that, that say, well, NCCU is number one, number one choice.
And chancellor, if I might add, we also are trying some other innovations like our Latinx initiative that trustee Valdari spoke about. We have some intentional efforts around reaching out to the Latinx community as well. She's assisting us with that. Efforts like yours, trustee Slate, trustee Mitchell, in terms of bringing individuals to campus, going through the hard training, which will help to better prepare you all to help us with our efforts. All will work and coalesce together to help us build the enrollment and keep it consistent.
Thank you so much, Provost Jackson. And I also want to shout out Mr. Bailey. Please, I have my training tomorrow. I, I just have a thought also about pipelines. You know, I always think about pipelines and as you all know, I'm connected with Durham Public Schools. One of the opportunities, and I just wanted to put this out, we can build this, is an opportunity that other institutions are already embedded in our school system through College Advising Core. It's the CAC. So we have Duke University and UNC who have dedicated staff who are in our buildings, building relationships with students. I wonder, you know, what is the, the, the desire? But also like, how do we build this so that we do have something like a CAC for NCCU? And these are advisors that are doing the college advising with students, building those relationships. I can tell you that, you know, relationships are key. People want to, you know, connect with folks who care about them, who'll guide them. And that is one of the, 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 the strong points, the strong suits that we have. We're here, you know, and especially for the school system here. I'd love for us to kind of think about having embedded, you know, I would say dedicated staff that are actually interacting with our students in Durham Public Schools.
Actually, you are correct. Actually, that's, that's something that we've done here in the past that will, that, to your point, we need to do more. For instance, Vance Granville Community College, we actually have an office there. And we have a dedicated advisor there full-time that works with those students as they come in. So if a student comes in and say, you know, I'm getting a two-year degree, we actually give them a four-year pathway. They don't have to leave the place. As they talk to the advisor at the community college, they're also talking to our advisor. So that, um, the question for us is we need to just find the funds to hire these people and place them there permanently. They see the students every day, they know the students. We are branded, you'll see an NCCU office. This is what is working for us at Vance Granville. Right now, we have about close to four programs over there. Social Work, Criminal Justice, and, um, I believe Nelson. So it's, it's a good strategy and we have to be doing all of this. And so I do agree with you with just, you heard in the presentation that, um, trustee Coleman just read, we just provided funds for 10 additional advisors for upper level. And those money we get from Title III. And so back to your point, the next thing we would do is find money in Title III to provide those, uh, advisors, well.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have committee chair, Tidwell for Advancement.
Trustees, the Division of Advanced Institutional Advancement does not have any items for closed session. Informational items include the following. Uh, but before we begin that, I'd like to recognize Vice Chancellor Hester, who will introduce some new employees that have joined her team.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, trustees, chancellor Akonley. Uh, it is always nice to bring some new people forward to our advancement team. As you may recall, um, with our BWF consultants, one of the things they said is we need to build capacity. And so today we are building capacity. And so I'd like to introduce you to our new members of the team. Starting here with Danielle Blackwell. She is a returning to the nest. She recently graduated with honors from NCCU, got her master's degree. She comes to us from PBS, UNC TV. Um, and she was formerly with us in another capacity. And so we are delighted to have her as our associate vice chancellor. Uh, next we have another, um, I don't know what I'm gonna say about you, Enoch. Anyway, he returns to the nest also as our director of annual giving. We hadn't, we had not had anyone in those positions for several months. And he returns to us from Elizabeth City, where he served as the director of alumni relations there. But now comes back to NCCU to help us advance our annual giving opportunities. Uh, the next eagle is Michael Newby. Michael is a graduate of the School of Business. He also currently will be serving as the director of development for the School of Business. Uh, he comes to us from the pharmaceutical industry, but he has been around the campus for many, many years. Uh, and I learned yesterday he was a former football player. So I didn't know that about you, Michael. Um, and then we have another, he's not an eagle, but he returns to the nest as well. Mr. Carlos McCall goes by the name of Los. Um, he is our director of advancement services and is doing a phenomenal job in helping us to get our data uh, in order. And we are very pleased to have him back. And then last but certainly not least, Mr. Ryan Clark, who comes to us from UNC. He is director of the College of Arts and Arts, Social Sciences and Humanities, working with Dean Carlton Wilson. And we are delighted he's making, all of them are making wonderful strides and, um, bringing us closer and closer to finalizing the year. And we're just delighted to have them. And we have two additional staff who are in the pipeline of being hired. So hopefully we will, at our next meeting, bring, be able to bring those individuals to meet with you all. So, so we are just, I'm super excited because we finally have some, some new members who are making an impact and relieving some of the other people who were doing multiple things. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, if, if I can make a quick comment before they leave. I, I know that, um, we've had a lot of, um, turnover in our advancement office. And it's not by accident, by the way. And so when we talk about building capacity, making sure that we have the right persons. I asked Ms. Hester to make sure that she introduce all of our new staff to you so that you can see that we are making progress, even in the environment where it's hard to find, you know, you know, people. I met with them yesterday while they were, and doing their social gathering building team. I'm very impressed with this team. And I know that Ms. Hester still has a number of, uh, staff to hire, but we are working very hard to make sure that we can build capacity. The other thing that I am appreciative of what they are doing now and in talking to Ms. Hester, and I want the board to know that, uh, we now have data that actually tells each advancement officer what the prospects that they have, what they're going to be working on. Uh, this organization is there now such that we can see how each person is performing and what they are doing. So we need to commend Ms. Hester and this team. And we're looking forward, uh, as we begin to work towards the capital comprehensive campaign. How many more people do you have that you need to fill?
We need to have, uh, we need to fill four more positions.
And we're making some progress. So thank you and thank you all so much for joining NCCU.
Thank you.
Next, we'd like to look at the fundraising update. We have a total of $7,499,403 in cash pledges and property that has been raised for FY23 as of April 6, 2023. This amount reflects all non-research-related private fundraising activity. The fundraising chart attached reflects this amount as contributed by each constituent group as a year-to-date comparison of the same period in FY22. It's important to note that the Day of Giving fundraising activity is not included in the total above. The graphs to the left of the gift totals are areas where institutional advancement anticipates growth now that annual giving, major and principal gifts officer positions are filled. The aforementioned amount includes the $1.5 million gift from the Goodnight Education Foundation Donor Advanced Fund. Mrs. Ann Goodnight gifted the NCCU School of Education the funds to create a new endowed professorship. The Goodnight Distinguished Professor of Early Literacy at NCU will support the early literacy. The Goodnight Distinguished Professor of Early Literacy at NCCU will join seven other distinguished professors to serve as a network of early literacy expertise with the purpose of advancing the University of North Carolina system's current literacy, literacy initiatives across 15 educator preparation programs through engaging in outreach and dissemination of best practice. A national search to select the Goodnight Distinguished Professorship in early literacy will be conducted. The endowed professorship is the 16th at NCCU since 1960, 1993. In addition to the million-dollar gift from the Survivor's Trust created under the Ernie Barnes Family Trust, the NCCU College of Arts, Sciences and Humanities Fine Arts Building will be named the Ernie Barnes Fine Arts Building upon approval by the Board of Trustees. The Day of Giving, the NCCU Day of Giving Campaign Dare to Soar opened the website portal for giving at noon on April the 4th, 2023, and it closed the following day at noon. As of April 6, the total giving was 566,000 with 1,000,300, sorry, 1,377 donors. Now, to date, uh, this is what we have raised or what we have been assured of. We know that this is not the final number. But because we work with an outside source, uh, we have not received the final reporting of all, accounting of all of the gifts that were received and directed to NCCU. Deuced our new staff people and, uh, and we are so glad to welcome them. Because as it, as you're indicates, there is much work done as we anticipate a major capital effort. The Office of Institutional Advancement will lead the development of a university and donor-centric comprehensive strategic roadmap with five to seven mile markers for performance measuring benchmarks that include prospect trans, trust strategy for frontline fundraisers, institutional business process reviews for standard operating procedures, a refreshed look at the development of a case for support based on recent data and alignment, identifying potential fee structure options to generate additional revenue and training for deans and our volunteer stakeholders. The trip to Pasadena has all of us excited. And, um, you have some information in your, in your materials regarding this. The NCCU Alumni Association, in conjunction with alumnus Joyce Davis, Joy Cruzes and Tours, is offering a package to attend the 2023 Road where our HBCU national champions will take on UCLA. The package pricing varies based on choice of hotel and or departure city. The link and QR code are provided to further explore options for travel. We hope to see all of you at the dinner. In terms, I know that some of the, that you will raise have to do with the package rates. I'm told that the alumna, the rates at the Omni begin at $219. And, uh, and the Omni will serve as the host hotel. We see the packages beginning at 1,000, 1,000, sorry, I'm stuck on this 1 million today. The packages begin at 1,098, depending upon where you leave from, which hotel package you choose, et cetera. Uh, but we hope that will not deter you from joining us in, in California. I know at this point we would open for questions, but I would like, uh, Ms. Hester, before we begin with the questions, if you would go back to the fundraising update, uh, I think I would have some questions as it relates to the total gifts raised up to this point. And I'd like you to begin with some discussion about that relative to where we were in 2022 as, and 2021. And at the, at the same time, I'd like to know if there are goals that we have set, that we set for this year and where we are in terms of those.
Thank you, trustee Tidwell. Um, yes, the answer to your question in terms of where we are, if you look at the gift comparison of where we are this year versus last year, we had some major outliers last year. We had companies such as PNC, GSK, Intel, and we had lots of companies providing resources to the School of Business for the real estate program. Um, and we had some anonymous gifts that came in. So that is the difference primarily between where we are now versus last year. We have about $6 million in the pipeline that we are working diligently to close before June 30. Obviously, we can't rush donors, but we certainly encourage, strongly encouraging them to close those gifts before the end of June. So, uh, we hope to exceed the goal. The goal this year was to raise $12 million. So we do feel confident that we can get there once we close these gifts in the home stretch, so.
Thank you. Uh, I saw trustee Dick and saying.
Yes, I did want to ask about the Day of Giving, that 566, there were no comparables year over year, unless I missed it.
Uh, last year we raised, we had one gift that came in, an anonymous donor of 500,000. So we raised a million dollars last year. If you take that gift away. If you take that gift away, if you look at the gift comparisons from last year, we, it was about five hundred and thirty-two dollars. So this year exceeds where we were, if you take that outlier out. We're having a little difficulty with the company that we use this year. They had some glitches in their system, and that's why we can't validate the total at this point. We think we're a little over six hundred thousand, but I just, I don't want to say that right now. Yeah.
And we should be able to provide that in the June meeting, hopefully.
Yes, absolutely.
Looking at the corporate three-year trend, eight point seven, five point four, two point three. Now, I understand last year was an anomaly because you had some, the business, school of business opening, blah, blah, so forth and so on. Year before was even higher.
And that.
Explain to me why that trend is going that way. Again, two points don't make a trend, three points kind of do. Tell me why we're going that way and what we're going to do to, to change that.
Well, in the FY twenty-one, we also had another outlier, which was five million dollars from Intel. So if you take that away, we are, we're pretty close to where we were. But that is the main reason why we had that outlier, which was the Intel gift from, for the School of, School of Law. We are making tremendous strides still on the business side in the College of Arts and Social Sciences and Humanities. And we do have several gifts that should come in, like I said, before the end of the fiscal year, which would increase that corporate number.
And if I could add trustee Slade and trustee Tidwell, I think what we need to be thinking about is those large gifts that are coming from the corporate entity not to be seen as outliers. We, even though we are beginning to move into that phase, that's why it's important to have the capacity that we're talking about, and I, Ms. Hester and I have talked about this. I think as we begin to cultivate, because these corporations require some cultivation. They don't come into your space in one day and you start asking for five billion dollars. They just run away when they see that. It requires cultivation, requires engagement. And I can say to you that that is coming because if you look at the number of corporate partners that we have now versus, say, three years ago, it is actually quadrupled. And so this is due to a lot of the groundwork that has been done across the campus, including the chancellor's office. We have corporate partners now that we've never had. But it's going to take some cultivation to get to a point where they give, they, they just give us. The type of funding that we receive from low through trustee Dickens's intervention, I think it was a year ago. We call that outlier, but it should not be outlier, where companies have excess money at the end of the year, and they are looking for where to unload it. Because that was the main essence for that. As we begin to cultivate these relationships, we'll get to a point where none of companies have enough, you know, relationship with us that if they have excess money at the end of the year, that they want to unload, that our institution is on their list. So we understand that, and that's what we're working towards. So that, such that we can see more large corporate donations. And I think Ms. Hester will agree with me on that.
And if I may say, we are very targeted in corporations. We are four miles from the Research Triangle Park, but we never really had a strong relationship. Next month, we are going to host forty executives from the Research Triangle Park to introduce them to NCCU and the various schools and colleges that we have here on campus to develop partnerships. We don't want transactional relationships, we want partnerships. And so that's where we are focusing to make sure that going forward, we will see the continuity of corporate and foundation giving over the years, from the years to come.
Vice Chancellor Hester, my question is about, what's your plan in your backup plan, really, based on the economy? You know, we're just, the numbers we're seeing daily, not just in technology, in terms of job loss and decrease in dollars for IED efforts, which would have probably been steered towards some of our campuses. So what's our backup plan for that? Or is there a plan for it?
The backup plan, trustee Dickens, as you well know, the majority of monies that come to the institution are not from corporations and foundations. If you look at any school and college in the nation, it is from individuals. And so with our wealth screenings that we have done, we have over two hundred and forty-some individuals who have the capacity to give us over a million dollars. So that's where we will be focusing to make sure that we offset, if we do see those declines in corporate and foundations, to do that.
But that's if those people still have jobs tomorrow, right?
Correct.
Because we're seeing twenty-five, forty-year executives who've been making millions of dollars, and they're in their late fifties, early sixties. So, you know, that given is not, you know, they're trying to hold on to live, right? So I just, you know, I know that's a target, but I want to make sure that there's, I guess I'm like one of those A B C plans. So I get it, I absolutely get it, that we're not as dependent on corporate, but those individuals, their stock value has decreased greatly. So I just want us to be mindful of those things we don't typically think about in their comp packages or what funds, you know, what the giving that they do individually.
We, we are very mindful of that. And so may not be an A B C plan, but we do have a plan in place to make sure that we are offsetting one for the other. And that's, I mean, we're, we're not, we're the same as any other institution. All, all institutions are facing that. So what we have to do is keep calling, keep touching, and keep developing the relationships to find those who are in a pretty good position to support our institution.
Thank you for the report, and I'm really happy to see the gift from the Goodnight Education Foundation. So the, along with that, so there was a, that, that great announcement earlier this month from the Business Roundtable that announced their support for early literacy and, and teacher, addressing the teacher shortage. We also looking at building relationships with the other members of that Business Roundtable. In particular, I think the ones that were at that press conference were Honeywell, Live Oak Bank, PNC, and AT&amp;T. But the Business Roundtable, that will be another group if you, if you haven't cultivated a relationship with this large group of corporate leaders who are investing, especially in early literacy and the, the pipeline, the job, especially STEM pipeline. So I guess my question is, is, has there been outreach to this Business Roundtable group?
Two of the, the partners in that round table, we are, do have relationships, and so we need to, we made some inroads with Honeywell, but we need to continue to do that.
Thank you. Susan, on the BW campaign planning update, on those action items, are there any deadlines that we can associate with it? Just to make sure we keep our momentum going. I see about eight action items, I think, seven, just to give us, continue us a comfortable level that we're moving. So I didn't know if that's something you can provide for us now or at the June meeting?
Probably at the June meeting. We just had our meeting with BWF and just, I just shared it with the chancellor about the details. And so the chancellor and I will meet with them to really develop that timeline, but we are looking over the next sixteen months. But in June, I can provide more details.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if there are no more questions, this concludes our report.
Thank you. Half, Chairman of the Athletic Committee, trustee Cornell Slate.
Good morning, trustee. I guess I feel privileged that I didn't get the script today, but I get the freelance. Dr. Perkins will come forward shortly to actually present the athletic report. I want to share something with you. On the fourteenth of April, I and many of you attended the ring ceremony for our football team. If we talk about our various schools and assignments, we need to have a level of expectation and precision and, and, and class similar to that program. I have been to majority institutions, I've been to churches, I've been to many places. That program from start to finish ranked right up there with the best I've ever been. It was a strong message from university to the students and to the parents of those students about what we bring to the table. And I hope somebody recorded that. That would be one heck of a recruiting tool to watch the enthusiasm and the diversity of our team and our athletics play us through coach. Just impressive. But I want to commend you, and I'm sure in the report that, that Dr. Perkins is going to give in a moment, he will, his goal is to have that same quality of presentation and efficiency and precision in everything we do on behalf of NCCU. Dr. Perkins.
Good morning, trustee Slade. Thank you so much for those kind words. That was a wonderful event. And I, I guess I've been like the students, I've been walking around like this for the last five days for the championship ring. But thank you guys very much, and we will delve into that. You can go to the next slide, please. This is obviously a very busy time for athletics. We have several spring sports that are competing at high levels. Men's and women's track and field, men's and women's golf are all getting at it. And this is also a great time because we have several sports that are getting ready to championships. And like many years, we have opportunities to win other championships, which is really great and fun. Next slide, our women's softball team is sitting in the top two to three spots, and they are doing well. They're going to finish up with a winning record no matter what, and they'll be in championships in Norfolk coming up. Our men's, women's tennis team, we start competing tomorrow for the championships there, and both teams are in the two, three slots. So those are big differences because, you know, we put a lot of emphasis on what football did, but we want to make sure that these other sports, our Olympic sports, get the same type of credibility and recognition for the work they've done. And in basketball, both men's and women's both had men's and records, winning records also too. So very proud for them. Next slide, you can go to. Okay, yes, as mentioned, the gala, and we had a really tremendous young man by the name of Jordan Reed, one of our football players in around the two thousand twelve era, who now works for ESPN, who was our speaker, and he was absolutely dynamite. He really connected with the students and the alums that were there, and we thank him so much for that. And then we finished right after that with a huge spring game, well-attended, nice and hot. Our team looks good again. We didn't have any major injuries, so we were able to get out of that unscathed and, you know, no pressure, but we, we want to repeat just like last year. And then also, we had our, Monday night, we had our Eddie Awards, named after our good mascot, where we recognized our student athletes, the work they've done in the classroom and their respective playing fields, and a very good chance for our students to really recognize each other, get dressed up and have some fun. That was also well-attended, and it's something our students really, really, really enjoy. Next slide. Coming up this summer, which will be free for all in North Carolina students, is we'll be having a, hosting a seminar with HBCU Summit. And a good, unique piece about this is we'll be hosting it, and this is a chance for student athletes across the state and the country to talk about that big NIL piece, that name, image, and likeness, and personal branding, how they can make money off their name, image, and likeness. So we'll be hosting that on campus, and that's a very exciting piece. That will be actually free for all students in the state, but they're getting registrations from all over the country for young folks to come on campus, and that will be held in our new student union. Next slide, I'm, I'm going to transition to a piece that we've been spending a lot of time working with development, obviously closely with V C Matheson and her staff, but, you know, mitigating the inherited fund balance and the timeline for support. Like many institutions our size that have Division One athletic programs, we know there are financial constraints, and we have to be creative and find ways to stay out of the red. And I want to share with you guys some three main points that we're addressing, working on now, and we're really kind of getting ahead of the game. First and foremost, it, it's the fundraising, and we looked at three different key areas right away, and that's establishing annual giving campaign, having individuals give a thousand or more on an annual basis to support athletics. They can pick and choose specifically where they want to go, but having a robust arm that we know is always coming in. And that would call the Maroon and Gray Club. We did it many years ago with the Thousand Eagles when I was, wow, I think I was assistant athletic director, and it did very well. So something we want to institute, bring back on campus, and we plan on starting on July one. And we already have close to fifty individuals already committed. So that's going to be a piece. Peak Sports, that is our partner on campus for corporate gifts, something we inherited. And as we really looked at the contract, worked with legal, we decided that it was advantageous for us to keep them, but we need to kind of change the split a little bit. We kind of felt like it was our inventory, and they were getting a cut off our inventory too. So maybe we need to work to find out that spread shouldn't be a sixty, forty their way, but maybe a sixty, forty our way. Yeah, they're doing some work, they're collecting the funds. So that was something we worked very closely with general counsel, and we were able to change. So that was a very big piece. And then last but not least, two areas that we're going to address immediately is we have the positions we're going to hire, Director of Development and Director of Marketing. And specifically, the Director of Development will plan, implement, and develop a fundraising program that provides short and long-term needs to the department, and the Director of Marketing will advertise and promote athletic campaigns to increase sales and build brand awareness. We've gone this whole year without either one of those positions, and we have the fundings and lines for them, so we're going to utilize them moving forward. Next, when it comes to revenue generation, a great thing that we've done over the last year is we have signed game contracts over the next six years where we're only playing one game guarantee that's netting us a minimum of over half a million dollars. You know, starting with UCLA, which is a big piece, we have UNC, we have Duke, we have Old Dominion. And that also helps was we did increase our football staff salaries with what they did, but we've already covered their salaries over the next five years for those game guarantees. Where some schools are playing three of those games a year, we're just playing one because we don't want to beat our guys up, send them all over the world for nothing. So our formula is more or less, we have our six conference games. We would love to play a classic every year, which we, you guys, we get, I get a call every day about a classic from Detroit to Indiana, Orange, Orange Blossom. So we want to play a classic against a HBCU in the SWAC. We also want to play a game guarantee in the rest be those non-conference games inside the state like Elon Campbell, things of that nature. So we're pretty good from scheduling football the next five years, and it all generates us revenue, revenue, revenue. So we feel good about that. Very pleased. And then we do have a large payout coming from the Celebration Bowl. And we like to use those funds specifically for improving our locker room. And we have just finished, we have some funds immediately that will go to completing the weight room, which I have to give trustee Johnson a tremendous amount of credit. It will be named, privy name Doug Wilkerson, which he chose, which was a former student athlete here. He gave a large gift of a hundred thousand dollars, and that really helped us complete it. And I have some pictures I'm going to show of that, but they do not do the justice unless you go over there and see for yourself. You have to see it for yourself. So next slide, please. Another area that will help us in athletics will be efficiency and overhead costs and strategies for administration management. Which basically really means letting some of the other professionals on campus partner with them and work with them a lot closer, letting athletics do what it does, but also allowing those folks to work closely with us. And that, especially with administration and finance regarding our staffing, travel, and budget, there are so many options that the whole campus is using that can benefit athletics that we're not using. So that will be tremendous. And then campus enterprises. This is where, you know, athletics doesn't want to be in the cash business. Concessions, ticket sales, game day operations, those are things that, you know, we can partner with campus enterprise because that's one of the areas on campus that really generates revenue. We can let them run lead and work with them on those areas. And then last but not least, which is a big, big deal nowadays, is the athletic certified trainer position. That has changed. That has changed instantly over the last two years. So there was a time where you could come straight out of school, uh, get your certification and you can go right to a school and work. That day is over. Now you must have a master's degrees and you must do an intern. So other folks are grandfathered into that, the folks we have on campus, but now moving forward, the pay for that position has moved up because they have to have a master's degrees and finding those students is tough. Even Duke is having problems finding these individuals because they're highly sought after. Um, that master's degree was a major kick in and like I said, we're fully staffed and we're fortunate that we have Dr. Stafford, um, who is also the physician for the MEAT Conference. Um, he's a Duke orthopedic surgeon, but this area now has just changed. So for us, we'll be working closely um, with student health. So we can partner with them with some of those physicians too. And um, the net savings from this right here is somewhere around three thousand, uh, three hundred thousand dollars alone. But key and important for us to do right away. Uh, next slide, please. Now, um, like I said, these pictures do no justice whatsoever. But if, if we had per se a, 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 a area that we had to get better and it wasn't our strength, it is our overall facilities. So we've tried to start with the infrastructure and getting down in the dirt because we know every student athlete is going to have to hit the weight room at some time or another, period. I don't know what sport they play, from golf to tennis to football. So now we have two brand new renovated functioning weight rooms. One for our smaller sports in the McDougal Gymnasium, which is beautiful. And another one that's down in the complex for our larger sports like football and track and field. So now we have a place for all of our student athletes so they can get bigger, stronger, faster and those type of things. And then what we also did was um, we have now PT areas for both of them too. So not, um, next slide. So not only do we have areas for them to um, train, get bigger and stronger, but we have brand new renovated PT physical therapy rooms for both of them. Because everybody gets an injury at some time or another and the rehab is so important. We have the big tubs for icing, the uh, hot and cold tubs. They're huge, um, almost like small swimming pools, but we have those things now that are in place. So our students can get back around their respective playing field uh, faster. And then um, the turf. So our turf field is uh, it's in bad shape. Uh, but we um, are able to get through another season and the process for the new field um, has already begun. It's just a timing piece. So after our last practice of this fall, the field will be gutted and we will start all over again. So the funding is there. We've had multiple folks that bid on it. We've met with all of them last week. So going through the finalization process of putting them in place. And I'm happy to say that we were able to repurpose a room in the racquetball uh, courts and we turned that into an indoor practice area for golf. Um, just about done. It looks great. Um, and the piece, the golf simulator was donated from a, a anonymous donor. So that, that piece looks great in there too. Um, let go of the next, oh, never start slides, fine. The next, so as I mentioned, there are other immediate areas need to be addressed from athletics. Um, from a facility standpoint, the uh, locker room is a big piece and we know we have some seed funding from the Celebration Bowl. But uh, as you guys know, right now, offense is in one locker room down the hall and defense is down there. So it's kind of difficult for Coach to work, but obviously he's found a way to manage. Um, our tennis courts have some major cracks in them and we do host all of our home tennis uh, matches there. And our women's team held a tennis tournament in the fall there. So we will have to get them filled and fixed uh, before next year. Um, our track and field, we have drainage issues and equipment, um, lack of equipment that is the only thing holding us back from holding track and field meets on campus. And um, softball, we need a whole home field in Durham. Currently we play all of our um, games in Cary, North Carolina. Something we inherited and we're working with the Durham Bulls and the mayor so we can bring those young ladies back on campus and they could play in the same facility, uh, the old D pack. So we're working on that right now. But what we found out and what we know is the more competition, the more camps, the more chances we get to bring young people on campus, it serves a recruiting tool. But also there's other ways we can generate revenue if we have more competition camps and practices on campus too. So um, that's all I have for now. If anybody has questions, concerns, issues, I'm free to answer them.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I can just add a few comments to um, presentation that uh, Dr. Perkins just made uh, relative to our athletic program. Uh, many of you know that uh, Dr. Perkins is, is, has not even celebrated his first year anniversary yet. Uh, coming back because I think that that comes up in June.
Yes, sir.
So he's only been here for what, uh, what maybe nine, nine months or 10 months. Um, the progress that you've seen uh, in our athletics program, uh, since that time, we've created two new weight rooms. You have not been there, we, we invite you to go there and take a look. We've renovated uh, major offices within the um, arena, my McDougal McLendon Arena. We have a plan to give the building a complete uh, facelift. When we are done with that, you might not recognize the entrance of that uh, arena. Uh, and I say that, all of that to say that uh, the athletics program, as I've mentioned before, is a business. And it needs organization. And you have to operate as a business. Uh, what you have seen just in, in 10 months is a thoughtful strategic approach to managing staff, managing programs and challenging them and putting discipline back into the program. Uh, the Celebration Bowl, we made 1.2 million dollars just for that Celebration Bowl and not to mention all of the media uh, time that we, that we secured. My point here is that we don't, we, we, we already have the athletics complex in our master plan. If you have not seen it lately, I invite you to go online. We even have a 3D version of it now so that you can see what future plans we have for the stadium, for the athletic program. But in the meantime, there are things that we can do to make sure that we have uh, safe equipment, uh, modernized equipment uh, when we are intentional about what we do. So I'm really uh, very pleased that Dr. Perkins is hitting the ground. He's doing a tremendous job. Uh, and I'm very confident that with all of the things that we're doing with the legislature, um, it may not yet materialize. We have gone down to the uh, General Assembly three or four times this semester already and we have some things in front of them. And our stadium is, is one of those things and we're going to continue to work on it. Uh, but my, my, my final point is that I have challenged uh, Dr. Perkins to come up with a plan, a fundraising plan that is systematic, that is strategic, that we can see and we can follow. And I think this is what you are seeing now. Yes, we do have some challenges. We need to improve our fund balance. There's no question about that, just like many other schools. But these are things that he, he inherited that he's going to work on. So I'm very pleased that uh, you see the progress that has been made in less than a year. Uh, and people are coming around uh, to support the program. And many of you in this room have actually stepped up uh, and uh, help us to improve the facilities. So I want to just thank him uh, in front of everybody because he's working very hard uh, every day. Thank you, Dr. Perkins.
Trustee Mitchell?
Thank you, trustee Slade. Let me just echo the comments trustee Slade uh, said about the gala. Adrian Perry did a great job posting, putting uh, the gala on. And I did, and I'd like to thank Coach Oliver, the way he recognized everyone who contributes to the success of the football team, even the equipment manager and, and the social media team. Uh, I give the best dress to the linebacker coach, that, 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 that white glitter coat. I, I, I think, I, I think he stole the show.
Agreed.
And, and so uh, AD, let me say thank you to you and your leadership. I remember a conversation we had in Charlotte and after the big win of A and T, you made a commitment. You say, we're going to get a ring. So uh, 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 thank you just for your leadership and your passion and making sure all our sports um, are faring very well and being competitive, not on the field, but also in the classroom. So many student athletes we have. Uh, one follow-up is about the turf replacement. We had RFQ out and you mentioned it was closed. So how many firms did we have, do you know, actually uh, uh, submitted RFQ?
Close to 10.
Oh, great.
It was close to 10 and then we got down to three finalists, which we met last week.
Fantastic. Thank you, trustee Slade.
Trustee Tidwell?
Uh, as we talk about fundraising, uh, I want to make certain that we are working in concert with our institutional advancement. Uh, because we don't want to be out there with, competing with our own selves as we go after our donors. And so I would expect that as you are looking at fundraising, major fundraising efforts, that we are working in tandem.
Absolutely.
And secondly, I want to ask about what we're doing as it looks at holistically looking at our student athletes so that we are preparing them of course for the afterlife. Uh, and making certain that we are really working with them so that uh, those that don't perhaps continue to pursue their careers uh, at the um, national level if they are ready to be actively competing in the world of work. And as well, making certain that mentally they can deal with when they no longer are in the um, arena of, you know, all of the applause and the hoopla of being an athlete.
Yeah, uh, that's one of the things that we're heavy on is life after college. Only a small, small percentage of any college student athlete is going to be a professional student athlete. So I think we're doing a very good job of career um, counseling and obviously the Counseling Center of Student uh, Health to make sure our students know that this ball, proverbial ball, will stop bouncing one day. Uh, and what you do on campus, um, you, just like any other student, you don't want to leave without doing an internship or a co-op, whether it's paid or unpaid, uh, those type of things. And what we've also noticed is most of the recruiters that come on campus are very interested in student athlete for their time management, for their working with others, um, team building and things like that. So um, I think we'll continue to do a good job with that because i- it's only such a small percentage that ever will be a professional athlete. And I think also to introduce them to the different type of um, professions around athletics that they didn't even know existed. You know, I remember as a student athlete, I didn't even know what an athletic director did. So you know, I, I think it's important that we share all that information with our student athletes um, as, as a moment they step on campus. And we've been doing that and that's something we're going to keep doing.
I want to add a, a comment to the issue on mental health. At that football gala, our coach talked about his life. He talked about the fact that in 2019, he was depressed, he was, he was troubled. And to have the guts to go before that group and, and make that statement about yourself was impactful. I would dare say every athlete in that room got the message, it's okay to ask for help. And I think that is crucial as we deal with these young men and women. That there was a lot of pressure on people and they need to have the ability to ask for help. And I applaud our coach for that. That was powerful. That was, that was, that was needed to be said and he said it, he did a good job of.
Thank you very much, trustee Slade. I will relay that message to him.
Are there any more questions for athletics?
If that. Just a comment, um, thank you so much for this uh, presentation and I'm also very interested in the drainage issues and I'm going to let you know from experience that this has been a topic in, in, in so many different areas where drainage issues all over in the schools, the track and field, like our, our kids are complaining of shin injuries and like all kinds of like injuries um, based on uh, the conditions of the track. And so I just, I'll follow up after just to, to talk to you a little bit about, you know, some of these drainage things and ways that we're kind of like, I'm seeing this being approached in some ways and I also know it's very pricey. So yeah, so we'll follow up after. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before I yield back, I just want to share, I've been involved in a lot of fundraising at black churches. And they were all hell, always got a building campaign going. And I, we've built some buildings. What we've also found though is once the, the uh, assembled group can sit in the building, the giving drives up. Because they figure we're there. Our athletic program is not there yet. It's still growing and it needs you to continue to support it because that's the lifeblood for uh, for athletics and, and for our, our whole institution. And speaking of that, the last three presentations had one key word in them for me, retention. Be it, be it uh, Susan, be it you, it's retention. We have to find a way to not only create a quality environment, a quality staff, we have to find a way to retain them. Because if we don't, we're going to be always spinning our wheels, our wheels, uh, building bandwidth for the next big program. We just, I mean, that has to be strategic and something that needs to be on the top of the ship. How do we retain our talent? And with that, I must, I must add you back, chairman.
Thank you.
Well, for my classmate, you can just take as much time as you need.
Uh, next, I would like to have uh, chairman for audit committee, uh, and that will be trustee Chadwell.
Good morning, everyone. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, the audit committee has two presentations for your consideration today. Uh, the first will be an update on the Title IX program. And I'd like to ask Ci- Ciara Joyner, Title IX Coordinator, to come forward for the information.
Good morning. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Ciara Joyner. My pronouns are she/her and I'm the Title IX Coordinator here in North Carolina Central. I'm going to take a few moments to give you a little overview of what Title IX is, what we've been doing in our office and some key considerations for the future. Next slide. So in education, we know we have a lot of different titles, so I recognize they can get a little confused. So I just wanted to put the definition for Title IX up here. Basically, Title IX prohibits the discrimination of sex for our students, faculty and staff. So I am making sure that we are not discriminating against anyone here on campus. This is specific because we receive federal funding. If we fail to follow Title IX, that can impact our funding. And as we've heard today, we know our funding is extremely important to our students, faculty and staff. The amendment did just celebrate 50 years last year and it encompasses a lot of different areas. When people hear Title IX, they oftentimes do think of athletics, which is a, a large portion to ensure that we have equal access there. But there are other considerations to consider over the years that have also been to encompass. A large part of my work is related to sexual violence, which includes sexual harassment, sexual assault and intimate partner violence. Next slide. So some things that we've been doing in 2020, the federal government gave us some key new guidelines that we had to follow. I actually was hired in 2020 and I want to say when I was hired, I was so impressed by a lot of the work that was already happening. We were ensuring that we were getting multiple stakeholders on campus involved so that when we write policy, while we are making sure we follow what the federal government says, we're considering our institution, our students, our faculty, our staff and making sure that our policies meet us where we are, but still stay in compliance. So here are some key things that we had to do and we continue to do. One is to make sure we have a full-time Title IX coordinator. That's me. Um, we have a statement of nondiscrimination on our website that the chancellor wrote and we will update it this year. We make sure that we supply accurate information to the annual safety and fire safety reporting that comes out of our police department and Cleary office. The Violence Against Women Act is another act that we have to make sure we're in compliance with. It works sometimes against Title IX. They don't always match together. So it's important we're looking at that. We developed a robust hearings and grievances process where I worked with our dean of students' office and our legal counsel. And we've updated our website. There were some key mandates that this 2020 regulation gave us that had to be on our website. So we've ensured that all that is there. Next slide. So some key things I want us to consider in this room and one is not on here because one actually just came out this week. So the first one, well, last week, the first one we have to consider is that some new guidance under our new presidential administration was very clear that we have to make sure we're not discriminating on the basis of pregnancy and related conditions. So that, that has added, it, it's added a different, a definitely a new thing for us to work with. I work with our accessibility. I work with our accessibility office to ensure our students who are pregnant or remember related, so that's miscarriages, abortions, and things, and we're not discriminating against them in the classroom. I'm very proud to say our faculty have been very helpful in this area and very responsive as we're working through this new guidance. The second is we were given clear guidelines that we can't discriminate against our transgender and non-binary students. As you know, we have LGBTQ center here, and we're one of few HBCUs with that. So ensuring that those students are not being discriminated in and outside of the classroom. Like I said last week, we did get a proposed new guidance regarding, related to transgender students in athletics. It's proposed. The federal government has not passed it yet, but it's going to quickly be passed in about thirty days. So when we have that new information, we'll make sure that we're in compliance, we're working with our athletics department, and ensuring that we're following those protections for our transgender and non-binary students. And the last key one is that we do have a new presidential administration since two thousand twenty, so we have been told and we know that two thousand twenty-three, this year, we will be receiving new guidance. Um, we were told initially it would be out May. We are very clear it will not be out by May. So when that new guidance becomes out, we are ready. I have multiple stakeholders here on campus. We'll be meeting to making sure we're updating our policies. I do ask this body, because last time in two thousand twenty, it was released in May, and we were required to actively have it ready to go in August. We are anticipating the same thing. If it comes out in June or July, they're going to probably want a very quick turnaround, and we're going to need this body as the final approval as we move through those other approval steps. But I assure you that we are prepared to make sure that we are in compliance and that we are supporting all of our faculty, staff, and students. Next slide. If anyone has any questions, I open up the floor at this time.
Recognizing any questions?
Um, I'll, um, I would, I was going to make the comment after uh, the compliance presentation, but I'll do that now because the reason why I asked them to make this pres- this presentation to the board, you will know, and I'm so sorry that uh, Trustee Michael Johnson isn't here because he's very heavy on risk management and, and, and risk mitigation for the university. And these two areas, Title IX and compliance, we've really stepped up. And you, 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 you hear from the uh, compliance officer in the next presentation. Um, these are areas that can get us in trouble pretty quick, especially OCR, Office of Civil Rights. We can be fined up to a million dollars in, in violation of any of these areas. And so I'm, I'm really, really pleased to see that these offices now on campus are staffed with experience, are staff who are on the job, and I think you will be impressed with the presentation that you're going to hear about compliance on this campus. We're taking it very seriously as well as the Title IX issue, so. Thank you uh, for your.
Thank you.
And I thank you also for the comprehensiveness of, of, of that sharing. So often, Title IX takes up a lot of oxygen around sports and athletics. And so now we're aware of the, the totality of its applicability and how well the, the campus is doing in, in, in the effort specifically in the Title IX area. Thank you very much for that presentation. Uh, we'll move on now to the next presentation uh, regarding the uh, update on the Eagle Eye Compliance Plan and Program as the chancellor has mission and mentioned. I'd like to bring forth Keisha Perry Green, the Compliance Mag- Manager for the presentation.
Good morning. Are you ready to talk about compliance? I am so excited to do this presentation today. What a better day to talk about compliance. Next slide, please. We, of course, have to start with the compliance mission. I am a proud alumni of NCCU, and when I got the opportunity to come back here to work on our compliance, the first thing I said was, well, I know one thing about an eagle. An eagle never leaves his perch without a place to go and a vision. So our compliance program has to have a mission. And I, of course, wrote a wonderful statement, but the first thing that came to me was we have to change the culture. And it just can't be with Office of Legal Affairs. It has to be university-wide. And then I also started my research and reading a strategic plan. And one of those core values was collaboration, was efficiency. And I felt it was going to be my job to ensure compliance, ethical conduct, but also how do we manage that? How do we monitor that? And then the one word I've learned a lot in my ninety-seven days, follow-up. Next slide, please. So the first thing was the Eagle Eye Compliance. The reason we named it Eagle Eye Compliance because we as humans have twenty-twenty vision, well, some humans, not me. Um, but eagles are blessed with twenty-five vision. That means what looks sharp and clear to us at five feet is just as clear to an eagle at twenty feet. That was important for me to recognize because we've got to be proactive. Managing compliance means we get ahead of things. We plan. And we should be the ones identifying areas of deficiency. We should then make a plan to correct those things. When we make the news, they don't say departments, they say NCCU. I know what that may mean, but I want us to feel proud about what gets displayed. We've had a lot of shine, but as you know, with shine, there's shadow. So my job will be for us to start being proactive, looking at things ahead of time, setting the eagle standard. Aristotle said it, well, there are a little bit debate about who said it, but I love the phrase, we are what we repeatedly do. Excellence, then it's not an act, but a habit. Compliance needs to be a habit. Next slide. We have been working. Fenita gave me a great mandate to hit the ground running. And so in January, we started with the Compliance Officials Working Group. In February, we met with twenty-eight officials. There are twenty-eight departments that deal with, excuse me, roles that deal with the word compliance. And I invited them all and enticed them with food to come to the meeting every second Thursday of the month. And what we've done is actually laid our hands to the plow and look at compliance and look at what we should be doing around the campus. Next was the Eagle Eye Compliance Page. It's one thing for me to walk around campus, but I wanted to have a webpage where you could see the information, see where we're going, and then also say, let me be a part of what we're doing in the world of compliance. In March, thankful to Internal Audits Director, Mr. Gaines, I was able to join the Enterprise Risk Management Group. Because if we don't know our risk and we're not mitigating our risk, how can I ensure compliance? And a key component of our full compliance plan is a risk management plan. And it's important that I'm touching all those UNC system counterparts, and they are now giving that information to me. And what I found out, there are a lot of new people that just started in the role. So it's important that we put our heads together, and as a system and as course for NCCU, we're ensuring compliance. This past April, I say this past April because April has definitely sped through, we started the Compliance Calendar and Matrix. And it was important that for each department on this campus, now they have a calendar, and it states from January to December what they should be doing. And then there's a matrix that says, this is not a Keisha-ism, this is the law. And what I do as the manager, I then send you a wonderful email. Hi, did you make sure we did the following things? If not, where are we? And then I circle back. I love that email. Hi, just circling back, want to make sure that we did the following. And telling them, I am in the ring with you. Do you need my help? Can I do whatever will ensure compliance? I'm not the one to watch it happen. I'm the one to get in there with you. What can I do? What can I research? What can I type? And for the most part, I have had so much of that wonderful eagle love to say, okay, come to my meeting. Okay, can you help? And I've been there. So what's going to happen with accountability? Next slide. We've got to go to accountability, and that bottom level was those responsible officials. Come on in. Let's go over what you gotta do. And then the middle, I'm a middle child, so I had to put compliance in the middle, but I've got to communicate that. And communication not by email only, communication where I come to your office, I come to your meeting, I come to whatever event you're holding and say, can I help? What's, what are we doing to evaluate this? Is it working? And what are we going to do next? And then point of contact, I am definitely staying in conjunction with Fenita and all the wonderful people with the Office of Legal Affairs because they are the subject matter e- experts on law. So I need them to look at what we're doing, review it, and give me that initiative to keep going forward, even when things become uncomfortable. Next slide. So what's next? Obviously, I'm going to continue with a full compliance plan because we need one that just goes over what we're gonna do and those wonderful things called KPIs. I am a, a happy researcher, but a little bit of a nerd, and I gave our group ten KPIs this month and said, let's start with five, and let's work on those KPIs along with Mr. Sutherland. And then we're going to participate in National Compliance and Ethics Week in November, which is a national event. And it's important that we get the spotlight out there so that everyone, students, faculty, and staff, understand compliance. Also, we developed a group tier group, a group-two group for collaboration, that other core value with Appalachian State and UNC Wilmington and Western Carolina so that we can talk about things that address us in our tier. What I found out was the general counsel is doing those roles of compliance, and it's not been separated. So those individuals at those universities are doing double work, and two of them are brand new. So I felt like I was in good company to say what areas are affecting you, what areas that we can share resources, and it's not a bubble, and we're not operating in a silo. I truly believe I can learn from all of those individuals as well as our UNC system. So it's important that compliance is not just residing with Office of Legal Affairs, but it becomes just ordinary and contagious. And you know what? Fun. Because I enjoy making sure that we're doing the right things, and what gets put out about my university is amazing. It is eagle excellence, and it's going to continue. Next slide. Any questions?
You can, you can see that we have a compliance officer on campus.
And I'll just wager without reservation that she's ready to entertain additional questions. Recognizing none. Thank you very, very much for that thorough compliance report. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that completes the report of the Audit Committee. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. As Chair of the Endowment Committee, I'd like to make a report. Trustees, the endowment report was provided for your review. Highlights include the following. For the period ended February twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-three, the university's endowment reflected a positive change in market value of point one-five percent um, since July one, two thousand twenty-two. This brings the total university endowment to fifty-seven point zero-three-eight million from fifty-six point nine-five-three million. The information also includes benchmark performance for both Exponents Investments Advisors and the UNC Investment Fund. At this time, we will hear from Vice Chancellor Corr Matherson to introduce our investment advisors for a brief update. While she's coming to the podium, one thing is that as you went through all the data, uh, it was pretty difficult as you tried to massage all that and get to a endpoint. But clearly, there are a lot of calculations and data here that maybe we don't um, flush out today, but we do need to take the opportunity to make sure we understand it. Because um, there will be times when you'll have to verbalize this as you talk about the endowment um, to our alumni and others so that we can communicate it effectively. So, Vice Chancellor Matherson.
Good morning. Um, and so we do have, as is our practice at our April meeting, to have um, an update from our investment advisors. And so we have Exponents in the room with us. They are going to uh, represent first, and they uh, there was a information in your package that was submitted beforehand um, for you to review. They're going to go over that now um, and make some recommendations that we can act on at a later date. And then we also have UNC management that is um, on virtually. They will come up um, second since Exponents is in the room. So uh, we have Ms. Clarissa Parker and her team. I know Ms. Clarissa Parker's name. I don't know team members. So I'm going to ask Ms. Parker and her team to come forward. Yes.
Thank you so much and good morning. It's a pleasure to meet you in person. It's been a while. Um, but I am Clarissa Parker, Vice President of Client Service, and I'm your Relationship Manager. And I have with me Somali Sanyel, who is a Managing Director and Senior Portfolio Manager of your portfolio. And along with her is Cameron McLennan. He also co-manages um, the portfolio. So um, I know this presentation is as of March twenty-fourth, but we did uh, leave um, some hard copies that are as of um, the first quarter, so I think um, we can get started. I'm going to briefly provide a firm overview, and then I'm going to turn things over to Somali and Cameron to talk about your portfolio and the recommendation that we would like to propose to you. So um, just to be respectful of your time, I'll just ask if we could just go to slide number five. One more, one up. Go back, yeah. Um, okay, so this gives a quick snapshot of where we are. Um, actually, at twelve thirty-one twenty-two, we had thirteen point five billion in assets under management. Um, we actually bought in over one point five billion in new assets. Um, and um, and um, you know, you can see the breakdown here, but I will tell you that as of March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, we're at thirteen point seven billion in assets under management. You know that the markets have been quite volatile, but you know, we added assets, and so we're not losing ground there. Um, if you look at this pie chart, on the left-hand side is the Systematic Global Equities Platform, which is at six point uh, three billion, and this is where we manage the assets for you and the active um, strategies. Um, I will say that um, if you recall, um, Exponents, um, so um, in two thousand eighteen, FIS Group um, purchased the assets of Piedmont Investment Advisors, and we became one seamless firm, and so in two thousand twenty, we rebranded the firm to Exponents. And um, we have forty-three employees today, fifteen in our North Carolina office, and the remainder in our headquarters in Philadelphia. Um, there have been no changes to the management team, and um, we continue to maintain our diversity profile, which is the DNA of our firms. So with that, I'll just pause and ask if you have any questions um, regarding the firm. Okay, if hearing none, I'll turn things over to Somali and Cameron.
Thank you, Clarissa. Good morning, everyone, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to present to you. Um, today we are going to walk you through your portfolio, your account, and we also want to make um, a proposal to make some changes to that portfolio to adjust to changing market conditions. So we will go into a little detail on that. So if you can uh, move to slide, I think it's um, what's the number? Thirteen? Yes. So this is the Systematic Equities Platform where we have active strategies, passive strategies, and ESG strategies. Those are strategies focused on the environment, social, and governance issues. Um, uh, so we, we do have a number of uh, strategies. But then, like I said before, what I'm going to do is if you can move to page sixteen, um, next, next slide, please. Yep. So this is the um, performance of the account. I'm going to let Cameron walk you through this uh, the account and how it has performed, and then we'll talk about the proposal we had in mind.
Thanks, Somali. Morning, everyone. Um, we have the performance up here. This is year-to-date as of the end of February. And as you can see, the, the portfolio was behind the S and P uh, five hundred at the start of the year, but that fol- followed on from a strong two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-one performance. What we saw in the What we saw in the first quarter and what you're seeing here is the, this back, the back ending of the, or the coming back of the growth concentration in the S and P five hundred, where a limited number of sectors and, and only several stocks actually outperformed the benchmark. And those stocks often don't pay a dividend or have a very low dividend. And that's why they, we hold those as an underweight in this portfolio, given that we have a dividend emphasis and a, and a lower volatility focus. Longer term, since inception, the portfolio is up almost eleven percent gross, slightly lagging the benchmark, but it indicates, is an indication of just how strong the equity markets have been over this period. The longer-term performance is somewhat challenged and that's primarily because of what occurred in two thousand eighteen through two thousand twenty, which again was this very growth, non-dividend paying bias of the market and very concentrated market. Overall, though, the assets have grown from three million dollars to over ten million dollars along with five million dollars of contributions there. Uh, next slide, please. Just quickly, before Somali gets into the proposals, just wanted to remind you of the current strategy. And, and here on the left, it's Equity Income Focus. I won't go through all the points, but it's, it's really the way we select, it's a screened portfolio. So we take the S and P five hundred and we screen it. We include companies that pay a dividend in that screen. But then on top of that, and really what would differentiate this product from a, a typical just high dividend yielding only strategy is we layer over these levels of quality. You know, where a company needs to have a strong balance sheet, also it needs to have strong cash flow. So in other words, that we may have good dividends today, but we want to make sure that those dividends are going to be there in the future. And, and those sort of highlight there as far as strong profitability, dividend security and, and growth. Next slide, please. And then as far as the portfolio construction, we take that screened list, which is generally about eighty to a hundred stocks. We then use an optimizer. Uh, and the optimizer allows us to be able to create a portfolio that has, is constructed in a way that it, it is in line with our tracking error and our sector and industry constraints to make sure that we're not taking bigger bets than we would like to in a strategy such as this. And then we rebalance the portfolio on a quarterly basis and the turnover is around fifty percent on an annual basis. Next slide, please. If you have any questions, I'll hand it over to Somali.
Thanks, Cameron. So if, yes. So we wanted to kind of present this proposal to you because as Cameron said, the current strategy is a large cap strategy that focuses on dividend paying names, right? So it's very quality oriented and these are companies that pay dividends. Now, the market regime, as all of you most probably know, has shifted to become very inflationary in the post-pandemic environment. And we have, we have been experiencing a rise in interest rates after more than a decade of very low interest rates when there was a demand for dividend paying stocks. Because people were not getting interest, they were not getting yield from anywhere, right? So they were moving towards stocks that paid dividends because they were getting some yield there. But as the market has shifted, we don't anticipate going back to that low interest environment again for a very long time. Perhaps decades, we don't know. But we, as far as the signs we're seeing, high interest rates are going to become the norm and possibly inflation will linger for some time to come. So what we are proposing are two options and we would like you to pick one of those two options is to take the current portfolio and keep sixty percent in the current strategy and move forty percent in a Smith, which is a small and mid strategy, and we'll tell you why. Or move sixty percent to our other large cap strategy, which is more diversified. It does not focus only on dividend names. And again, forty percent to small and mid. So moving to the next slide, just to give you an idea of what strategies we're talking about. On, on the next slide, we have a table that shows Equity Income, Market Plus, which is our other large cap strategy, and then the Smith Strategy. And you will see that the tracking error, which is a measurement of risk, which is based on measuring the variance of the portfolio from the benchmark, is much higher for your current strategy, four to seven percent versus the other large cap strategy, the one to two percent. So it's, it's a lower risk strategy with more names and more tightly controlled, slightly higher turnover but tightly risk control. And then we have the Smith Strategy, which is a more concentrated, more alpha generating or excess return generating strategy. So on the next slide, we talk, we, we show you what happens when dividend payers don't do well. Then the Equity Income Strategy also tends to lag the S and P five hundred. So this, the purpose of this slide is to show you how correlated your current strategy is with the performance of the dividend factor. So if you look at the fourth row from the top, you will see that whenever dividend paying strategies have underperformed, the, your current portfolio has underperformed and vice versa for majority of the years. So that's the correlation. The other thing we wanted to point out is that in the S and P five hundred, the share of dividend paying companies has been going down. Because you know, you think about the mega cap, large, you know, tech companies. A lot of them don't pay dividends. You know, Amazon doesn't pay a dividend. You know, Google doesn't pay a dividend. Microsoft and Apple do, but Facebook doesn't pay a dividend or Meta, as it is called now. So we can't own these names in the portfolio, which is a problem because those names are driving returns. And you will see that in twenty fourteen, eighty-five or almost eighty-six percent of the S and P five hundred paid dividends. Today, less than eighty percent paid dividends. So again, we need to shift a little bit in order to capture the market returns. Moving on to the next slide, we also wanted to show you what the dividend yield factor does in rising interest rate environments. Like I said, we are entering a market environment where interest rates are going to rise and the dividend yield factor consistently underperforms. That's what the numbers show here. Does much better in falling rate periods, which we have already passed. It's behind us now. So again, this leads us to propose to you that we need to move because the, this high interest rate environment is not very conducive to the current strategy. On page twenty-four, the next slide, we, we show you what, how large cap and small caps are smaller caps. So S and P five hundred is a large cap index. The Russell twenty-five hundred is mid to small. That's a Smith Strategy Index. Again, in rising rate periods, the large cap index tends to underperform smaller and mid-cap names. Falling rate periods, they do better. That's another reason to move a little lower on the market cap spectrum, meaning to start owning slightly smaller names than what we have in the S and P five hundred. And next page, please. And then we also, you know, Smith cap names, small and mid-cap names are very undervalued compared to larger names, which means there will be a bounce back at some time in the near future in these names. So we need to be positioned to take advantage of that bounce back. And then, um, next slide. And then we put this slide to show you the difference between the two large cap products, your current Equity Income Strategy and Market Plus Strategy, which is a more diversified large cap strategy. And if you look at these two lines, show the tracking error. Again, tracking error is a measurement of risk. It's the deviation from the benchmark over time. And you will see that Market Plus is much tighter to the S and P five hundred in its performance than Equity Income is. Your current strategy tends to have large outperformance and large underperformance. So it's a little more volatile. So as we are getting into these uncertain times, especially with the risk of recession around the corner, we feel that it would be safer to go into a more diversified strategy. And then on the next page, what we did is we kind of took the entire period for which we have managed your strategy and, and showed you on the right two columns what the combination of the two options we're suggesting would have performed. So Equity Income and Smith, sixty forty, or Market Plus and Smith. Both of these are actually looking better. And so we think that that is going to be the trend moving forward. There's more support for that. That's what the data says. And so we would like to propose that you move to one of these two options, which is kind of the conclusion we draw on the next page, slide twenty-eight, that given this dividend growth orientation, we recommend diversifying the exposure of the portfolio to increase the potential for return generation. So either one of those two proposed options could be the way to go. But that would be something we would do only with your permission and with your blessing. So if there, if there are any questions I can answer for you, so you can make the decision, you would be happy to answer those. We can stay on that page.
What I'd like to do first is open the floor up for questions from the trustees and especially the committee.
So I'm actually preparing for our investment committee meeting, so thank you. But our CFO tells me that real estate, though soft, is an opportunity because there is a dearth of it with people working remote and people trying to offload it too. Is there any recommendation to increase within, you know, our investment area, any realty or reads or anything like that?
So both of these benchmarks have exposure to real estate. You know, it, it is one of the sectors in the benchmark. So your portfolio will automatically have some exposure. I won't say that we will overexpose. It depends on how those individual names look like along the way. Sometimes we'll be more exposed than the benchmark. Sometimes we'll be less exposed. But that's not going to be the focus. It's, it's going to be diversified. So we will have everything else like energy, technology, you know, all of that, along with real estate.
Out of the two recommendations that you, you've given us here, and looking back at slide twenty-seven, which one on an analyzed base you, you think is, I mean, both of them I think are good, but what would you recommend based on? And I know, yeah.
Yeah, I would, or we would recommend moving to the Market Plus and Smith combination, the sixty percent Market Plus and forty percent Smith. We feel the risk is more controlled in that combination.
It's also higher in a percentage.
Yes.
I have a question. So does the strategy abandon dividend receipt?
I mean, it's not the driving factor. There'll still be dividend. There'll be a lot of names that will pay dividends. Dividend, it'll still be this, it'll, the dividend yield will be similar to the S and P five hundred's dividend yield. So it's not like we're going to throw it away. It just doesn't become the driving factor as it is in Equity Income. We will take into account valuation, earnings momentum, all of those. It'll be a more balanced approach.
Follow-up. So if we're not focusing on dividend, which is bringing in revenue as a direct result, how do we make the gap up for the dividend that we lose?
The capital appreciation. Because what is happening is although you are bringing in money through dividends, your total return of the portfolio is less because those stocks are not appreciating as much. They're not going up.
Follow-up. So you have to sell the stock though to realize the gain as opposed to holding the stock and receiving a dividend. And you're assuming that the stock's going to appreciate.
So the way these other strategies work, we rebalance them every month. So we realize gains every month and then we reinvest those gains. We do the same with the current strategy. It's done more on a quarterly basis. These have a higher turnover, so they're done more on a monthly basis. So their sales made, gains are captured. Sometimes it's, there are losses too because if something is not doing well, we want to replace it with something that has the potential to do better. So, and again, you will still have dividends. Don't get me wrong. There will still be income coming in because we will still have a lot of the names. And this large cap strategy, Market Plus, has hundred and thirty names. Your current strategy has fifty names. Out of those fifty names, eighty percent of the names will still be among the hundred and thirty names that they'll own. So you're not really going to lose too much on the side of dividends. Maybe it'll go down a little bit, but the appreciation of the portfolio and the capital gains would more than offset it in a normal environment.
One last question. You estimated that we're going to have long-term interest rates are going to be high. That's sort of a subjective term. How do you define high ongoing interest rates and for how, what duration?
So you know, we were used to almost like zero percent or close to zero percent in the last decade, you know, since the great financial crisis. High, meaning the Fed, of course, is, has pledged to keep rates high, pretty high, till, you know, all the, all the numbers start looking acceptable to them. Inflation specifically, they want inflation to come down to two percent before they start, till then, they're going to start, keep raising rates. So again, whether they will be able to bring it down to two percent is a matter of debate. We don't think that it can come down that low from where it is right now. But the expectation is that interest rates will remain in the four to five percent range. Maybe go down three and a half, something like that. Definitely quite a bit higher than where it was in the past decade.
Good afternoon, good afternoon, good morning. Few things. I'm having problems with your premise that we have recession, but we have high interest rates. So I guess to trustee Walker's point, can you define high in terms of numbers?
Well, high in terms, it's, it's a relative term, I should say, high or low. It's relative to where we were, right? When we had the great financial crisis in two thousand eight, interest rates almost came down to zero percent, right? And over time, they didn't go up much. They remained in that half percent to one percent range. And then in the past twelve months, the Fed has raised rates at the highest rate in the last forty or fifty years, you know, the highest pace or the fastest pace, I, I should say, in the last forty or fifty years. Because inflation, I mean, they were just late in raising rates because inflation really took over. Inflation is still pretty high. They haven't been able to make a dent in inflation. So if inflation is around, what is the CPI now, like somewhere between six and seven percent? Between six and seven percent, frankly speaking, in a perfect scenario, the Fed has to raise rates up to the inflation rate in order to control inflation. So the Fed has to raise rates to six and a half, seven percent if inflation is at seven percent. Now, they cannot do that in one, you know, the flip of a switch because that will bring the economy crashing down. So they do it gradually. And, and so it is kind of, at some point, inflation is going to start coming down and the Fed is going to stop raising rates and pause. And they might cut a little bit too. But the expectation is that inflation is stubborn. It's not going to come down very quickly. So we are talking about five, six percent interest rates. That is the relative high that we are talking about right now. And I know you mentioned recession. Yes, everyone is waiting for recession to happen because that's how the, the cycle happens, okay? There is, the economy is booming, everything is going well. And then suddenly, you know, things start, like inflation starts creeping in. The Fed comes in, they raise rates and the Fed is always doing a balancing act and they're not very good at it. Usually, they will tighten too much and they will slow down the economy to the point where there is a recession. Then they'll start cutting rates and then the economy will come back. That's how the cycle has worked with smaller cycles in between. Now, this time around, it's, it's kind of, there are some trends that the Fed is grappling with, meaning we are seeing the labor market is still pretty strong. We are seeing inflation is very high, so the Fed wants to keep raising rates. But what will happen is suddenly we'll see that economic growth will start slowing down because of these consecutive rate increases. And we are expecting a recession, but the expectation is that the recession is going to be somewhat mild to moderate. It's not going to be like It's not going to be like a great financial crisis kind of recession. Yeah, it, no one, now, no one knows, right? No one has a crystal ball. This is all kind of educated guesswork. That's the best way I can put it, you know? So the expectation is that there will be a slowness in growth, a somewhat of a moderate or mild recession. The Fed will stop raising rates and maybe cut it a little bit, and then the economy will again start growing. So that's kind of the scenario we are talking about. But it is more or less the uh for most investors, they think the next decade is going to be a decade of higher interest rates when compared to the past decade. And when higher meaning in that range, let's say five to six percent.
Okay, current interest rates. I'm gonna put the four to five category.
Hmm.
CPI recently is trending down recently, very recently. Um. I've done the dividend strategy before personally.
Yeah.
It only works if the capital investment goes up, because you can't earn enough in dividends offset a write-off in the capital, in the in the principal. It's just, it just doesn't work.
Right.
Um, when I look at your uh page five and I see, if I read this right, six point three million dollars in global equities as a
Yeah.
Uh twelve thirty one.
Yep.
And two point seven in fixed income.
Mm hmm.
That seemed to me to be aggressive. Um.
That's that's what, that's our asset, that's what the firm has in assets under management, so that's.
Again, to me, that's aggressive. So somebody's money, somebody has got a lot of money at risk in this scenario, I mean, significant risk. I just thought the ratio were 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 kind of bothersome to me.
Yeah, what, no, that that slide represents our asset, our firm assets under management, meaning that in fixed income, we are managing about two point seven billion for a number of clients on the various strategies, like some of them are.
So it does speak to where the money of investment.
No, this is not control. It's just what money we have raised, what our clients have chosen.
I think we have about um I would say over at least a hundred clients. And their assets represents this thirteen point five.
Okay.
As a uh twelve thirty one, we're currently at about fourteen point seven now.
In.
And assets under management.
Okay, but I'm, from a percentage standpoint, how much of them fixed uh versus other equities, just roughly?
So these clients, they choose. So you know, each one of these clients has multiple managers. We might be managing the fixed income part of their portfolio or we might be managing the equity part of the portfolio. So this is not in our control. I mean, we don't determine the ratio here. It's just how the clients come in, what uh strategy they want to choose.
Now, I'm trying to dummy this down.
Yeah.
Basically going from where we are today to the sixty forty Market Plus SMID. What we're doing is mitigating risk.
Yes.
Uh because the mo- based on your assumption that the dividend payout will not be as significant. And so this will minimize the amount in a, in the new market of what we could lose.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
On the dividend side, what you're saying is that we could lose more.
Yes, on the dividend side, what?
Based on where we are today, if we were to stay.
Yes, we could underperform the broad market more.
Because less dividends are going to be paid under the current concept.
Yes.
Yeah. All right.
Dividends, oh, sorry to jump in, but then even the absolute level of interest rates, we're getting back to this point. At, we've gone from zero is is the issue. And at zero, two or three percent dividend was very attractive to investors. Even if that goes up to two or three percent uh on the on the fixed income side or the interest side, we're seeing dividends at two or three percent no longer become as attractive because of the points that you make, because you're also bringing along the capital appreciation or depreciation.
That.
Depreciation.
Exactly.
Depreciation. So that's, that's really where we're we're going with this, rather than calling
Right.
or six percent interest rates for the next team.
And plus, if the market switches at some point, look, we think this is going to be much longer, I know. I mean, a lot of things have to shake out.
Yeah.
But um we can always make adjustments back or whatever you want to do.
Exactly.
I I guess my question is more along the lines in terms of communicating. Uh I I really don't know the process that we're using in terms of our staff speaking to you staffs and our regulars. Because you you're coming to us asking us to make a change as a board, and we won't see you again for two or three months, whenever you come back another. My question is, how often do you see our staff to keep them abreast in terms of how these these, we're making money or losing money?
So we do get. Yeah, so we are communicating.
I'd say you come to the mic.
Oh, okay.
Oh, oh. Saying, no, I don't want to hear from you, I want to hear from you. Oh, okay. So we, every time that we get ready to go to the board, we are getting monthly reports that um from both of our investment advisors. And if there are um flags that come up immediately, then there's follow-up that we do with with our investment advisors. And so we're talking to them um more often than not uh as we get the monthly reports, because we're doing this every month and then we're reporting that back to you. Uh we have um as a board, in the past, we have heard from our investment advisors annually, and it's typically been in April. But there is nothing that says that we can't do that um more often. If that is something that we would like to move to, I know our investment advisors have no problems coming forward to talk to us. So that's just a decision um on how we want to move forward.
So how much flexibility do you have to make changes?
Um, my flexibility resides with the board.
No.
And so I I'm, am I missing your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
So they come in one month and say, look, here's where we are, but we recommend you do something different.
Mm hmm.
Can you make that decision, say yes or no, or do you have to say, I've got to go back to the board?
No, we have to come through the endowment committee of the board.
Is, does that work well for you? I I I'm trying to understand, how much flexibility do you need
Mm hmm.
to manage these funds?
Um.
Without having to come back to the board?
I think we'd have to look at our policy.
Let me help you with that question.
Thank you.
Uh trustee Bell. The way that the board has operated, that's why we, the endowment committee here has the flexibility. Staff cannot make, you know, uh adjustment on their own. Uh they can come back to the board and raise an alert. And then, of course, the endowment committee can look at it. But just on by her, by herself, she does not have the authority to do that.
And so I guess what I'm coming up to is, should the endowment committee be meet more frequently to understand how we manage the money? My 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 thought is, yes, we ought to meet meet more frequently than we are meeting now.
We you have to meet according to the bylaws of the board of, I mean, of the your your board of trust, the board of trustees bylaws, and all of those are specified in there. If you want to have a call meeting on a regular basis, you can also do that. But you have to remember, every time you call a meeting, an official, you know, that that departs from your regular board meeting, if you have more than two or three of you, it becomes a public meeting again, and you have to provide, you know, a public notice.
I'm speaking about the committee, Mr. Chancellor.
Oh, no, I understand what you're saying.
And I I don't, I don't, I personally don't have a problem with committee meeting more frequently and it being public. I don't have an issue with that. But I do have an issue with us having to wait every two months, every three months to find out where we are.
And what we're saying to you, trustee Bell, is that you do have that prerogative. We're not arguing here, this is not a point of contention. Uh what I'm simply saying to you is that if you want to have a regular call meeting as an endowment committee, you do have that flexibility, but you just have to understand the open open meeting law, that's what I'm suggesting to you.
I I have a problem with that, but.
And I will also.
Answer my question, and I'd like to speak to your person later.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. And I will also add that this is a partnership. We have, we certainly appreciate our partnership. We are down the street, we're your neighbors, so we have no problem meeting with the staff quarterly or how often the committee thinks necessary.
I had, just have a process question for today's meeting, because I look at the agenda and I don't see that we have an item to vote on today. But the presentation was that we needed to make a decision, so, and we adopted the agenda. So I'm, um it's just most mostly a process question of, are we planning to vote on this today?
Onto that question. Um, the reason why we didn't put, put it as an actual item is because we want you to have the opportunity for the presentation and then have a discussion. And if you are then satisfied with your discussion and you want to vote on it, it can be done today. Or if you need more time, then we can move it to June. And so if we put it on the uh the item as an actual item that you have not had an opportunity for this discussion, then it's premature. So it's up to the chair and the board, if you think you've had enough of this conversation, if you'd like to have more conversation before you vote on it, that's.
And then as a follow-up, um we will also have a presentation from the other investment group. So to me, I to voting until we hear a proposal from both. I'm hoping if there is a vote, that it will be done after we hear from both of of the.
So may I clarify that um Exponent has had the proposal for today. UNC Investment Advisors is providing their annual update.
What what I would suggest for the endowment committee, since we have more discussion and understanding that we have to come to grips with, is that um we probably meet at another time if there is a sense of urgency uh prior to June, and we can sit down with, uh help me say this name correct. I said exponents, but that's. Exponents, yeah, with exponents. We can do that and have further understanding.
Okay.
How's that? Everyone good with that?
Chairman. I think I'm reflecting trustee Bell. To me, to wait till June to take an action just seems too slow. It it it, the committee should be empowered proper uh to say, we need to make some adjustments midstream. Because if I met with my financial guy once a quarter uh and we had no interaction in the interim, no serious interaction, I have a problem with that. So I I I guess I'd just like to see the the committee um have a working session or meeting or whatever to talk about where we are and where we're going and not just wait till every quarter.
Okay, well, I hope I I may have said that, but I was trying to reflect the fact that we could meet to get further understanding of this and then make a decision as an endowment committee. How's that? All right.
Could I just, again, process? Are we authorized by the board to make that, as a committee, make that switch or not? I mean, we can meet as an endowment committee and decide, yeah, we'd like to do sixty forty, but whatever they do. Do we have to come back to the board, have the board approve that? I I'm just trying to understand what authority we have as a committee versus as a board for this particular item.
If it requires a vote, because you you know, um if you're going to have to vote on it, then you can have a call meeting.
That's right.
You can have a call meeting following that and 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 that will be the only item that you put on.
Okay, so I want to thank our um investment partners with Exponents for bringing the information to us. Um and we'll be in touch with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Add some more questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We also have on um Zoom, and hopefully they're able to uh pull Mr. King up. But Mr. Jonathan King from the UNC um Investment Fund is going to give an update on our assets under management through the UNC Investment Fund.
Thank you. Um can everybody hear me okay? Okay, excellent. Um and and my slides have been loaded up. So before I go into the the slides, and I I'm going to try to respect the time, um but I I just want to start with some introductory comments uh that that we are quite a different fund from from the group just heard. The the USC Investment Fund is a large co-mingle fund that pulls the dollars from all the fund participants. Fund participants are are most of the schools in the UNC system. Uh and each participant in the fund gets exactly, you know, it's it's, everybody participates in everything we do. So everybody gets essentially this the or or the same return, they do get the same return. The market value of the fund most recently is is about ten point two billion dollars. And and we employ a truly long-term oriented strategy that is very diversified amongst a number of different asset classes and a number of different underlying investment managers. Um so un- unlike a traditional manager that has a portfolio of publicly traded stocks and bonds, we have very heavy allocations to various alternative asset classes, including things like private equity, hedge funds, private real estate uh investments. And the single largest asset allocation in the fund is to private equity, which includes venture capital funds, growth equity, private investment funds and buyout funds. And so we have a very, very different profile, and and it's really a profile that that is set up to to earn very high returns over rolling five and ten-year periods of time. But also, and and just as importantly, to protect um value in downturns. And so I'll show some numbers um in my presentation that they reflect that. But I just wanted to give sort of that 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 big picture overview. So if if um you can move to slide four, I want to skip a few slides and go straight to slide four. Um, this shows that, you know, the results, the recent results. So for last calendar year, calendar year um twenty twenty-two, the fund was down five point two percent. And I'll show in a minute that that was actually a pretty good result um, but based on what was happening. This this fiscal year to date, and there's an overlap period, but this fiscal year to date, the fund is actually slightly negative. And part of that, and I'm going to talk about this in a minute too, is is sort of the timing of of public market returns versus private market returns. Um but first, if if we go to the next slide, it just shows um basically in calendar twenty-two, it was a terrible year for both stocks and bonds. Stocks were down um eighteen to twenty percent, bonds were down as much as twenty-seven percent on the long-term end. So there was really no place to hide in the calendar year, which puts in perspective that negative five point two percent return turned out to be a a a positive result, given sort of everything that was was going on. Um, so basically, if we go to, go to, skip to slide, skip to slide seven, just I want to move through. So this kind of shows how our fund um protected value encountered in year twenty-two. These are the primary asset classes in the fund. So basically, we have some traditional asset classes, long equity, which is just, you know, equities and fixed income. We also have these other asset classes that we say are kind of uncorrelated to stocks and bonds. We have a, we have an asset class called diversifying strategies, where we hire managers who who their definition is to not be correlated with stocks and bonds. And they employ quantitative strategies, some macro-oriented strategies. But they had a great year last year in a down year, though these managers in our portfolio in aggregate were up sixteen percent. We also have some uh assets that are, you know, can be uncorrelated or inflation hedges or whatever you want to call them, uh real estate and energy. Once again, both had had very strong years last year and o- offsetting the losses in some of the other portfolios. So that's how, that's how this fund works, is they have a number of asset classes, some that will do well in rising markets, some that will do better in in falling markets, some that will do better in in inflationary times. And it's set up that over a rolling ten-year period, it it will generate good results. So so um I just want to turn, the next slide um just talks about the fiscal year to date, the nine-month. And here you can see equities have rebounded quite a bit, bonds not really as much. So in this environment, you know, one would expect a pretty decent rate of return, whereas our fund, go to the next slide, was actually down a little bit. But the main reason um for this negative return is what I call the 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 timing differences between the way pu- pu- public equity markets um sort of uh reflect valuation changes in private markets. So two years ago, in the the, there was a real kind of bubble mentality in the equity markets. They went through the roof, there were great returns, and in that environment, we generated phenomenal returns. We had fiscal year with forty-two percent. But then it became clear that those those valuations were excessive, they were unsustainable, and public markets correct those valuations very quickly. It takes a period of months uh when the public markets sell off, and that's what we saw on calendar year twenty-two. Private valuations, these are, once again, venture capital funds and buyout funds. That we get quarterly reports, the managers kind of, you know, assess what's going on in public markets, but they don't mark things either upward. We get quarterly reports, the managers kind of, you know, assess what's going on in public markets, but they don't mark things either upward or down as quickly. And so basically, what happened was when, at December thirty-first, their auditors arrived on their doorstep and said, okay, you got to show us how you're valuing your underlying holdings. And they said, you know what, I guess we probably need to take some write downs because based on, you know, what's going on in public markets and evaluations are, you know, did turn out to be excessive. So when the twelve thirty-one valuations came in on the privates, we took some hits and that's that negative thirteen point nine percent fiscal year-to-date return you saw. So it's kind of lagged from when the public markets took those write downs the first half of last calendar year in large part before the beginning of the fiscal year, whereas our private managers have taken them this fiscal year. But I'd say most of the write downs in the private book are now behind us. You know, we can start moving forward again, but that, there's a little bit of a time lag that creates some, you know, what I'll say, decoupling of the returns between our portfolio and what's happening in public markets. But now, you know, let's talk more importantly about longer-term returns. So if we go forward to slide eleven, two slides, this is our, you know, kind of one, three, five, seven, 10-year results on the top line and three, five and seven, we're still above ten percent compound returns and 10-year, we're still very close to ten percent compound returns. And if you go down to that bottom, compare it to other institutions at our custodian bank, other endowments and foundations, we're basically performing over the three, five, seven and 10-year periods at or above the top decile level, just slightly below for seven years. So we're a top performer by employing this very diversified portfolio. Go to the next slide. And this just shows over a five-year time period how we kind of add value. Private equity is the strongest performing asset class. It has compounded over the last five years, and this is even after these write downs I just spoke of. It over twenty-two percent a year benchmark, even the private equity benchmark is up seventeen percent. So it's a great asset class over the long term. But you do get these periods of time where you get a little bit out of sync with the public markets. But once again, this is, if you look down this chart, we, you know, our asset classes are all performing very, very strongly relative to their benchmarks. And virtually all of them are outperforming just the traditional equity index over on the left-hand side there. So that's how we generate the strong performance. And then the next slide, just as importantly, in down markets, when the S and P, these are all the periods of time going back almost twenty years, when the S and P is down more than ten percent, our fund loses about a third as much as the S and P. So we do go down in down markets, we go kind of about a third as much. And that, once again, is by design. I don't have time to describe all the strategies, but within some of our portfolio strategies, we have managers that will play defense in down markets. So we have this combination of using private equity to generate great long-term returns and then using another subset of managers, mainly, you know, that will be called hedge fund managers who protect in down markets. So we get this combination of, you know, good outperformance in down markets and strong long-term performance. I'm, skip two slides to fifteen. This is our really long-term performance chart. We now have a twenty-year track record. The green bar is our stated objective of earning inflation plus five and a half percent. The gray bar in the middle is a traditional seventy, thirty stock-bond portfolio and the blue bar is our realized results. And so once again, you can see that seventy, thirty stock-bond portfolio has not been able to keep up with our long-term objective of inflation plus five and a half. Whereas our portfolio, through this combination of, you know, sort of aggressive bets in private equity and playing defense with some other parts of the portfolio, has generated these long-term returns that pretty much kept up with our objective. The fifteen-year period reflects both the recent bear market and the oh eight, oh nine bear market, but it's still pretty close. So I'll just, I want to go through this quickly once again and answer any questions. But on page seventeen, so two slides forward, this is our asset allocation targets. One more slide. So this, once again, shows how diversified we are. We actually have a target to traditional long equities of twenty-eight and a target to private equity of twenty-five. But private equity actually, because of those very strong results, is over its allocation target. Long equity is just slightly under its long target. But once again, very, very diversified portfolio with lots of different asset classes. And we have a team of fifteen investment professionals here who are basically finding the best managers in the country and even around the world to employ these strategies. So if we go basically, two more slides to nineteen, our primary advantage, we really believe in our time horizon. We don't worry about month-to-month or quarter-to-quarter returns. We really take three, five and 10-year time horizons in terms of how we think about things. We do have an illiquid portfolio. We can't get in and out of private equity or some of these real estate funds very quickly. So we have to manage our liquidity profile and manage our illiquidity. But we, basically, what I would say is barbell. We have lots of very, very liquid things in our traditional portfolios and then to offset the illiquidity of these other things. But it really is where we have to bring a lot of skill to the table in terms of managing this kind of a really alternative-heavy portfolio. I've got a few slides talking about looking forward, but why don't I just leave that for questions? And so if we go to page twenty-four, the final slide, you know, I just say, you know, we struggled a little bit recently as markets had sold off here. But our three, five and 10-year returns are still at or ten percent annualized. We're beating our targets. And we're in a top decile relative to peer institutions. So we believe that over the long run, we will continue to deliver great performance to NCCU and all the other participants from the UNC system. From now, I'd love to answer any questions.
And the Investment Advisors have brought copies of a notebook to you. We did just receive the one that Mr. King was going over. It's just been emailed, so it'll come to each of you. Exponent sent it to us in advance because they were putting forth a proposal, but we have theirs that will pass out after. But if there are any questions for Mr. King.
Do you have the UNC? Because that's Exponents. Do you have the UNC?
I just emailed it to Dr. Edmonds and we can send it to the trustee members in just a moment.
Okay.
And just to respond to that, if there are questions that you have after you've looked through the materials, you can feel free to reach out to us either through your staff or directly to us at UNC Management Company. We'll be happy to answer any questions. I apologize if these materials were not sent out in advance. There was, you know, that's on us. But once again, we're happy to answer any questions that come up along the way.
Well, first of all, I would thank you for the presentation. Glad you explained because it's very difficult following a presentation, not having the material before us. But having said that, Mr. King, you spoke a lot about diversity of funds. How diverse are you in terms of minority managers? I mean, managers, minority managers, do you have managing money on UNC Management Company?
So we don't have any, we don't have an allocation or any, you know, specific managers who are sort of put in that bucket. One thing we are, so you know, the answer is we don't have any. We have managers where women are the primary owners and senior people. None where it's people of color. It's something that we are trying to incorporate, what I'll say internally, you know, sort of through our, through our internal process and also adding diversity amongst staff and our investment fund board members. But it's something that we know is a sensitive issue. And we're trying to figure out how to address it, but it's not something
Do you need help in finding those financial managers? Do you need any assistance?
Part of the issue, and you know, it's funny, Isaac Green and I, Isaac from Piedmont. And I got to know each other very, very well over the years. And we were working with Piedmont at the time to try to create a product that met our needs. Part of, our approach is very different. Like I say, we don't use a lot of traditional managers. And so we find very small niche managers, very honestly. And so we were trying to work with Isaac to come up with a product that was, that met our needs more than kind of a broad institutional need. And that's the sort of discussions we're having. We don't really need managers to track the S and P or do a, you know, a broadly diversified approach. And we try to, and so I'm kind of being very long-winded about this, but but we tend, you know, I said we have a lot of non-traditional managers. We hire very non-traditional types of strategies to employ this approach. And so we're working hard to try to, you know, you know, once I can see how we can square that with with this issue of, you know, having a more diverse manager group and not just the traditional, you know, whether it be Wall Street guys or whatever, and
Do you issue RFPs for fund managers?
We don't issue RFPs. What we do is, it's sort of an organic process where we use other fund managers to make recommendations and you know, networking and those sorts of things. And that's, you know, once again, that's part of, I will say, the challenge we have is we have, you know, that does not lend itself.
I'm not going to prolong this. I think you get my point. It's very disappointing for me to hear that UNC Management Company, the amount of dollars you manage. You don't have any minority managers. I haven't reached out for any minority managers. I know Isaac Green. I know the account office, you might have helped him. But, and we don't have any control of it. At least I don't have any control of it sitting on this board. But it's disappointing and I think I'm going to write a letter expressing my disappointment and suggest that if you are having problems, we might be able to come for this. If you aren't, I think you ought to be reaching out to some minority firms to manage all of this money that you've got. They're capable and qualified financial managers that are minorities that could do the job that you're doing. Not asking they do everything, but for this amount of money that you put out, I think you should be able to find. So I conclude my remarks. I do look forward to getting the hard copies of your presentation.
Yeah, I hear you. And if you write that letter, I will forward it to our board and make sure it gets on our board agenda.
If I could just, for the record, Isaac Green from Piedmont is now Exponents, by the way. So NCCU, from our standpoint, do deal with minority because Isaac Green is a minority firm. And they have a portion of our endowment. UNC has a portion. They have a portion now. The question raised by trustee Bill on UNC, that's UNC. But I wanted to be clear that the university does engage a minority firm, and that is Exponents owned by Isaac Green.
Okay, if there aren't any other questions, then that concludes the endowment report.
Thank you.
Let's take about a quick five-minute break, please. Because I know I'm putting pressure on a lot of people sitting here.
I just called meeting back to work and, um, it's like it is from our, we got a chairman for the finance committee.
So I was going to do these today and how to be part of, but here is a map. So if you set up in my business for the finance, for you, uh, for finance, oh, one more.
Trustees, the finance of facilities has several informational items and one action items. Informational updates were provided for facilities projects. And updates included of cour-, of course, the completion of the Austin Avenue Apartments retail project. Panera Bread and a provisions on demand store opened in October. The nineteen ten lounge is being fit with suitable furniture for flexible usable space for a variety of smaller events. And then this will be a rentable venue for all. Uh, this one gives me heartburn to tell you that the Baines Residence Hall demolition work continues. You know, I stayed there softly. So the building has been vacated of state surplus items. Staff have coordinated with university archives and the chief brand officer to record and preserve aspects of the nineteen sixty eight building. Heavy demolition work is slated to occur from mid-June through mid-August with completion expected in late September. The last retail location Panda Express in the new student center opened on March thirtieth. This completes the full student center project. The new school of business building, and I saw it this morning, amazing. It's about eighty seven percent complete. Of course, you know, the project has been delayed and it was further delayed. And so the revised moving date is August twenty twenty three. Uh, in time with keeping the building on track to offer classes there beginning in the spring of twenty twenty four semester. The approved low bidder contract for the twenty four seven collaborative learning and research center reported difficulties in securing appropriate bonds once the contract was awarded by the state construction office. As such, staff has engaged a discussion with both the second and third lowest bidders. The project will likely have to be re-bid. A revised timeline will be provided at a later date. Other new capital projects on the horizon include the Lee Biology Building and the Taylor Education Building. Other smaller renovation projects under, uh, underway include, well, this is good news. The WNCU renovation project is under, underway. And then there are some additional various facilities operations projects as well. Next, we have an action item related to the all funds budget. I'd like a vice chancellor Matheson to please come forward to present this budget to the board for action. It's noted that it was not in the book and it's, has it been sent so that we can see it or we just need to look at the screen?
Well, they are sending it now. Um, because it's loading it now. And because it's not loaded, I'm not sure that they have it in the back. So we may need to, um.
Well, in, in a room, I'll do this. Are there any questions about the other facets of the report before we can go? Cause maybe they'll give you a little tone. Any other questions? No bricks for, for, um, for Baines, right?
I do have a comment. I participated in a, um, regional alumni meeting with all the presidents from that particular region and associated people. And one of the things came up is they want to know what happened to the bricks at Baines Hall. And they'd like to see them placed somewhere on campus. And all I said chancellor is that I would just communicate that back to the appropriate parties at the universities. And I didn't have an answer for them.
Some side, the, the bricks at Baines or the bricks.
Bricks at, uh, Chidley Hall, Chidley Hall. Yeah. Well, and, and you probably need to save a few from Baines just in case the way Emily's acting.
The bricks from the, um, she, Chidley Hall, as you were now, actually, um, those bricks were compiled. If you remember, uh, Dr. Harriet Davis pitched that several times. They stored them somewhere. Uh, I don't know exactly how many people purchased, uh, but, but at some point, people were having themselves to it. Um, but they, a- and, and I don't know, you know, how much, how passionate people are. People do talk about that, but when it comes to the actually purchasing it, not a whole lot was sold. People were rather have it free, but, but, uh, Baines Hall, the same thing will happen. It was the, uh, Dickens. If people want to buy, it would be in the domain of advancement. We have no problem, you know, preserving those bricks. But we can't just store them forever, you know, um, so they will be available.
Any other questions about the report, uh, as we await, uh, the loading of materials?
So when does it look like we will occupy the new business building?
So it's going to be, uh, first semester twenty twenty four.
Well, we will be in the building, um, in August. We will not program and have classes until the spring of twenty four, but we'll be in the Aug-, in the building August of twenty twenty three. So this fall.
Are we planning a ribbon cutting or something major to maybe want to get that date on people's calendars?
So we are planning it. We do not have a date yet. We usually try to do those dates around a board meeting. Um, so yes.
Would you like to reserve your brick now?
Well, okay. So I, I always get some money. I, um, I asked you, I told him that while I was doing the thing, but I guess I better get a brick now.
Yeah, yeah. We can take your order now.
Trustee Dickens, uh, one, one question I made on the twenty four seven collaborative learning research center project. Uh, you made an, uh, reference that we'd have to rebid that because addition of four hundred seventy thousand dollars. So what, what would be the skip to?
So we are working on that right now. It does, um, chancellor has pushed us to be extremely aggressive in getting that done because it's something that's been out there now for far too long. And so we're looking to try and keep it as close to the original schedule, which would have been a September, uh, twenty four completion. Um, but I will, we will have more information on that definitely at our next board meeting.
It's, it's, it's unfortunate because the, 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 the contractor that could not bond, this is not something that we know. We didn't know this. And the state should have known something about it, but, uh, we found out at the point of contract signing. So, uh, and so unfortunately now it appears that we're going to have to go through repeat again. And that, that's going to slightly delay, but I have charged the staff to make sure that we are aggressive and on top of it. Um, and, um, but these sort of things, they, they are happening with constructions far more these days.
Um, so, um, uh, trustee Dickens, I do have the PowerPoint loaded up now. Um, my apologies that this was not already, um, provided to you. So I'll go over this information. I guess I can't click from here. Um, if you will advance the page, please. Um, so we're going to go over kind of where we are with the all funds budget, a little bit of background because we do have a few new members. Um, so the, uh, budgeting is a common best practice. Um, historically, the primary revenue streams for the UNC system have been state appropriations and tuition. And so as we continue to grow as a university system, um, it was recognized that more and more of our institutions are doing a lot more with, um, alternate sources of revenue that support the institutions. And so there was, um, a decision to create an all funds budget that would come through the board of trustees and ultimately to the board of governors that gives a more, um, exhaustive look at all of the sources of funds that are on a campuses. On some campuses, um, the auxiliary enterprise, we call it campus enterprises here, is, uh, can rival fifty percent of the budget. And then on other campuses who have extensive research portfolios that grant funding and research funding is also a significant portion. And so before last year, when this started, that information did not bubble up anywhere. And so there was a lot of activity going on on campuses that may or may not have been accounted for in one central location. So NCCU is not at the point that our campus enterprise auxiliary budgets are fifty percent of, of our overall revenue. We are pushing to do something like that because that's a revenue generation. And also we have seen significant increase in our research dollars. But, um, our primary source of revenue still remains state appropriations and, uh, tuition receipts. If you can do the next slide. Um, so the old process was a lot of different spreadsheets for everybody. We have, uh, we now have, uh, an Anaplan system that was introduced last year. And some of you may remember participating in the working session where we actually went over, uh, the Anaplan system and looked at how departments were able to look at their prior year budgets, uh, actuals to date to hook it to student credit hour generation, particularly in our academic departments as we make decisions. Next slide, please. I think I've just discussed the prompt, uh, how the change was. Next slide, please. Next slide. Um, and so beginning with fiscal year twenty two, the board of trustees had to be presented with a comprehensive operating budget called the all funds budget with a template that was developed by the UNC system that reflects all funds that the university, um, is managing with the exception of capital funds and grant funds. And the reason is capital funds are restricted by nature. They are allocated for a capital project. You cannot turn around and say, I want to use this to hire people. Same thing with a grant. A grant has been received because there's been something written and it has been funded as such. And so there, you do not have the opportunity on a campus to redirect a grant just because it is the, uh, desire of the university. So grants and contract and capital are not a part of the all funds budget. It is still something that we are looking at, um, but it is not a part of what goes forward to the UNC system and the board of governors. And so what we have today is, um, the all funds budget request as well as information on how the, uh, divisional allocations were developed in each area. Next slide, please. Um, and so the development of the all funds budget, this is what we're being guided under at North Carolina Central University. Resource alignment with the strategic priorities, promote stewardship and financial sustainability, and better understand the impact of discrete decisions on the broader financial picture, improve the transparency and campus engagement, and strengthen the fiduciary responsibility of our board of trustees. One of the things that as we talked, and this has gone through our, um, university budget committee and ELT, we also made a presentation to, um, our extended leadership council. One of the things that we talk about in terms of development of our funds budget is that, um, at this point for North Carolina Central, we're not receiving significant uh, increases in funding through enrollment growth, which is one of the primary drivers when you're talking about growing some of your, uh, some of your budget. And so because of that, there is strategic redeployment that has to be done. And so this is the process where we are looking at programs, program growth, program constraint, where we need to put additional funds because this lines up with the strategic plan and where the university is deciding to move next. Um, and so we make the statement that vacant positions on the campus of North Carolina Central belong to North Carolina Central University, not a department. And so when you're looking at things like that, then if there's a vacancy in X department, um, and we do our strategic, uh, we look at everything that's going on in that department. It may be that, that, that vacant position needs to move to another department that has another need that needs to be filled because there is growth and there's, there are things going on there. So this is an opportunity to look at things such as that. Next slide, please. Um, and so we have to, once this is completed through the board of trustees, a two-page, uh, narrative that is also submitted with the report that talks about, uh, progress towards system-wide strategic goals, institution-specific strategic goals, improved efficiency and sustainability and enterprise risk. This PowerPoint presentation that I'm going over with you today actually constitutes the bulk of the two-page narrative that would be submitted. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Okay. So we looked at academic affairs. Academic affairs is certainly the largest component of, of NCCU's budget. And so the guiding principles that were used in academic affairs that line up with, uh, NCCU's strategic plan as well as the UNC's strategic plan. Student achievement and success by expanding retention efforts and support for academic programs. You heard about some of that earlier through the provost, talking about the ten new advising positions and other things that are on the horizon. Programmatic excellence by strengthening design and implementation of courses across different instructional modes. Professional development for further advancement of faculty and staff and community support and partnerships by aligning programs with educational workforce needs. So these were the guiding principles in putting together and developing the budget, um, in the different academic affairs divisions. Next slide, please. Additionally, it, uh, includes funding for various efforts and initiatives that support instruction and foster research activities. Um, so for the fiscal year twenty four budget cycle, there were no new requests to academic affairs funding allocations in terms of additional enrollment growth and things of that nature. Um, in addition, the academic affairs budget requests across the schools and colleges ref- reflects the bulk of the adjustments for the enrollment reduction. We are saying that we have one more year where we are subject to an enrollment reduction. And so we receive that information this year. It is baked into the budget request for next year. And so we're going to claim that through all the work that the provost in his area is doing in enrollment management, that going forward, after we get to fiscal year twenty four, we will see enrollment growth. Um, and we are not subject to reductions because reductions, um, well, we have to realign it when we have reductions. Um, additional emphasis on initiatives to support recruitment and retention. Additional resources have been Additional resources have been redirected to support both undergraduate and graduate admissions. University, college, and upper division retention efforts inclusive of graduate programs and the School of Law. The budget request also reflects efforts to stimulate additional research that, as this remains a top priority of the university as we push forward for a different research class, Carnegie classification. Next slide, please. In student affairs, so student affairs does have some state funds, but the bulk of student affairs is going to be housing and other areas that are more receipt-based. And so funding has been strategically allocated to support students' sense of connection, both on the campus and within the larger community of Durham. Additional funding also supports expanding student activities hosted in the student center as well as support to maintain the facility. And you'll see in parentheses, student activities fee increase. And so what we're doing is tying in those tuition and fee increases that came before you in December to show that that's a part of the overall budget request going forward. And so in housing and residence life, additional funding has been allocated through a fee increase that was approved by the board to support maintenance and renovation related to life safety and ADA compliance. There's also a larger discussion that's beginning to take place on our campus regarding residence life in some of our halls because we do have some significant deferred maintenance. And that cannot be addressed through fee increases. We couldn't increase the fee enough to address some of the outstanding deferred maintenance. And so it is about looking at redeployment of resources, doing the work to see if at some point we are looking at some type of bond so that we're able to make some strategic investments in some of our older halls now that we have the new P three halls. The budget request also reflects continued efforts to reinvigorate and enhance the career and professional development that has been a major focus of the university, particularly student affairs, is what do students do? What should they expect once they complete their four-year degree? Next slide, please. Also, the sense of connection, and I think this is copied. Next slide, please. In administration and finance, the budget request reflects an effort to collaborate with other university partners. You heard A.D. Perkins mention earlier about realignment of resources to move some of the activities from athletics into administration and finance. And so the budget request reflects that. So there's someone, a position that is going to be in travel that supports athletics. Also in purchasing, the budgeting function and then in campus enterprises, some of those functions with the ticketing and things like that, so that athletics is focused on and using their resources on the management of athletics versus all of the other administrative duties that are taken care of across campus. And police and public safety, the use of campus security funding to continue to move forward with making sure that we're securing the campus, creating a sense of presence. We do not want to completely arngate our campus. We can't do that because we're bounded by four public streets, but we can use the strategic kind of use of plantings and fencing in certain areas to let people know and brick pillars so that you are aware that you have arrived on the campus of NCCU. And there is a different expectation when you're going down those few blocks, right? You can pick up the other foolishness when you get past our campus. But when you're here, you know that you're here. And so we're using the physical component as well as redeploying the resources to make sure that we have more foot patrols for our police in the budget. And then we had a dining services increase. Campus enterprises is a part of administration and finance. And so that's allowing us to expand the retail. We've actually completed all of the retail. Now we have to maintain it. We also, we heard Exponentz mention the CPI increase. So there was a nine percent increase to the food service, to the meal plans that was approved back in December. It was about maintaining the retail operations and the quality of the food that's being provided because one of the factors in inflation is the cost of food away from home has gone up tremendously. And so the budget reflects that. And I do want to mention that we've moved from five retail locations to supporting twelve. I will put in my shameless plug like everyone else has. If you have not seen all of the retail locations, you really need to stop by and see all of the retail locations. Students are happy. Faculty and staff are happy. The Panda Express is now open. Anything that they could possibly want to spend their dining dollars on, we have tried our best to to put it in place. Next slide, please. In advancement in athletics, in advancement, the funding has been put in place to support a full complement of staff. Saw that this morning. And then they still have some others that are coming. Athletics, the budget reflects strategic efforts pointed to fundraising and game guarantees. I feel like I'm repeating a lot of what my colleagues said earlier because that's what is used to create the budget going forward. The operational efficiencies we've talked about. Next slide. I T S and other administrative units. You may remember that with the fee increase, we also increased the education and technology fee. And that is to support information technology, particularly the changing costs or rising costs in some of the software and hardware that we currently have on our campus. There's also an effort to look at if we have enough, if we have too much, if we have duplication. So that is also the efficiency because in some places we may have purchased software in certain departments that is duplicating software that we have somewhere else. And how do we make sure we're managing that?
Back up, Ms. Max.
What? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, all right. And then we are increasing select positions in Title IX for our investigations and compliance and strategic marketing initiatives and internal audit has a full staff. We're also using funding to support a cross-divisional university event center office. Next slide, please. And if you would pull up the other PDF or if you can scroll all the way up or maybe go to the summary page, the summary tab. Can you enlarge it? It's it's online. If you refresh that web browser, it should come up under financing facilities. And as you can see, this is certainly a UNC system office template because it's out in red. It has do not change this tab. Do not make changes in this tab because it's a summary roll-up. But what I wanted to show you is that everything that I just talked about is then expressed in this budget presentation. And so we have the general fund, all auxiliary and other trusts, overhead and F and A receipts, which is also some people call indirect costs. And then some of our restricted funds, those restricted funds are more of the some of the grants that we are able to use for daily activity and also endowments. And so it is the, not the full endowment, it is the cash amount of the endowment that will be available to be used in the next fiscal year. It is not the endowment in totality. So if you will go to the budget template again, I'm sorry, can you go to the cover page? Okay. So this gives a chart. And for those of you that are looking online, if you will click on the tab that says cover page, it gives you a chart format. The the budget, the revenue and the expenditures for North Carolina Central and how they are being used. And so you can see in the academic units and it's showing you in the shades. And so you can see, as has been the case for many years, the majority of our expenditures are in personnel, which are, they're fixed costs to a point. But that is the lion's share of the budget. And so there are not many changes you can make. I see. Can I help anybody get to that page? Okay.
One minor question. You had a line that said, starting the fiduciary responsibility of the board. What, what did you?
That this is, this information is being presented to you annually and that then quarterly we are providing year-to-date where we are going forward during each quarter. And I think more than anything, the goal was to put the information in front of the boards because this information hasn't been in front of the boards before.
So Mr. Chair. I think maybe where trustee Bell is going is this process was improved so that the board could have more insight into this. Last year, we had a working group meeting with the committee in advance. So I can't tell you how disappointed I am that we didn't get to see that. This wasn't in the board book. And I think your fiduciary duty means you can't rubber stamp something when you've only seen it ten minutes ago. I understand the document is not due to Board of Governors until May fourth. And I'd like the board to consider not taking a vote today and being able to take the vote electronically at some time between now so that, and May fourth, so that you can at least say that you've had your fiduciary duty of reviewing these. And if there are any questions, because we don't know if there are any questions. The process was, you know, legislation, everything was changed to make us more engaged, not to micromanage, but to make sure that any questions we had that we were beginning and we can sit and tell you what percentage of the budget is going to people, what percentage is going to new initiatives and things of that nature. And I just don't feel comfortable. And I may be the only one, but I did want to make sure to say that I, you know, one of the three things, having formally worked with the Association of Governing Boards of Colleges and Universities, fiduciary duty is one of the key three things for board. It is specifically stated in the language here. And taking a vote on something you've not seen previously just would be totally against that.
And I, I will defer to the board.
Thank you for saying that because that was kind of how I was feeling as well. But I did want also clarification. You made a comment about funds from the endowment being available. Could you speak to that in terms of how the decision is made of how much from the endowment and who who makes that decision?
So it is based on our current board policy that says four percent of the available balance is being used annually to support an endowment. So what we do is we pull that forward each year to provide the different professorships and scholarships, and that is now reflected in the board. We did have a working session last year. My apologies if I missed anything. I know that I did not hear from trustee Johnson, and that's normally who kicks off my process. So my apologies for that.
So where is that in the budget work form? Because I was trying to find that was, where is that?
If you look under the budget template, if you will go to the budget template, and it's a tab on the bottom. And if you will scroll over to, and this is, this is kind of what we did in the working session. And if you'll scroll down to the colleges, the different colleges and schools, you will see the amount that's allocated. And again, not all of that is endowment, so we can break that out, but there's part of the endowment and then other restricted funds that are available to a particular school and college.
Okay, so it's not one specific line item that says endowment. It's broken out and
It's in the restricted funds column.
I have a question. Okay, recognize. It's Walker.
Trustee Walker.
Thank you. About the dining services. A few years ago, we switched vendors on that. The board talked about it and we decided to make a change on that. And I know everyone is happy with Panda Express and Starbucks and perhaps this might even be better addressed to trustee Bebe is, okay, well, we have Pearson Cafeteria down here. How are the students, now that we've had a few years to, you know, to adjust to a change in the provider? How do the students feel about the general Pearson services? Not not specifically the
Not just the retail locations, but the main cafeteria.
How often do we revisit that subject to see if the change that we made was a wise one?
So there is a monthly, and then I'll let trustee Abbe speak as well. There is a monthly meeting. There's a dining services committee that's made up of students and some staff and members of the Airmark team that meets monthly that reviews all things dining, including the main cafeteria as well as all retail locations. Airmark, one of the first things they did after their first year was to do a meal plan optimization to look at how best to use the meal plan for the students that would make it more attractive. One of the things that they pledged to do that appears to be reflected is the different stations that are provided in the main campus dining. One of the things that that students talked about was having more options in the main dining hall. And now there are several stations. And they are continuing to, you know, transition those stations out as, you know, based on the needs of the students. So they started out, there was an Asian fusion station that wasn't getting as much traction. That's been redesigned. Now they are looking at growing some, some, or an herb garden that is being used in the main cafeteria that will be used to in food preparation. So there seems to be a constant, you know, they're constantly looking at the best way to support students, but I'll turn it over to trustee Abbe if he has any comments.
Yeah, so just to reiterate what V C Mathers has said, the student body relax Panda Express, I think that's like the, I guess, favorite, favorite option. I know students love Chick-fil-A as well, too. But one of the great things that, you know, Airmark has done, which is the new provider, is definitely listening to the student body. And so one of the things that, you know, I'll focus on in my presentation later on is just how well NCCU hospitality, along with Airmark, is is available to the students. And so we have a council of presidents, which is presidents from student organizations on campuses. So we got together. We got together January, February, and I believe March. And during that March meeting, Airmark actually offered us food to just listen and just kind of like a, I guess, set of a lunch, it was like a dinner, dinner thing where we came together and talked about not only the different changes that students would like to see, but also some of their favorites. And so I could definitely say that students are enjoying the cafeteria along with the dining services here at NCCU.
Trustee, trust to Walker, that's a great question. And you know that dining is so important to students more than anything else. And if you're not getting good services, they will let you know. I mean, you wouldn't have to wait long, based on my experience. The services that has been provided by Airmark outside of the national retail was something that was one of the reasons why we changed contract on the vendor. And Mr. Abbe is correct. There is a periodic survey that is also done. And that's done periodically with the students, just in terms of their satisfaction with the dining, not not retail. I go into the dining three, three days a week to eat. And I interact with students all the time. When I'm there, if they don't like the food, they will come to me. I mean, they will let me know. Last week, Dr. Edmund and I went into the dining hall. Uh, last week, Dr. Edman and I went into the dining hall. And as soon as I step in there, I stopped by a table of group of students. And I said, well, how are you guys doing? They said, we love the food. And one of them in particular mentioned the name of the previous food service. This is better than, than that. Uh, the service was with me, so you don't have to worry, the students don't like the food. You will hear about it. Uh, and so the experience has been great, great based on what Mr. Abbe says. And we continue to gauge that. In fact, yesterday I was talking to Ms. Matheson and the director of our, of our campus enterprise that they need to periodically meet with and not to assume that service is good now. But if we don't check with them periodically, people have the tendency to let go. We just had that conversation yesterday, so we are keeping an eye on that uh question.
Well, thank you. You sort of answered, were they voting with their feet? In other words, going out of Pearson and going to these other places. But from the responses that, that we've received here, they like both and that's good news.
I wanted to make a comment also that I've, I've visited also the Pearson Dining Hall. I've seen um student activities and engagement. I've seen DJs, you know, like I came in there and the music was just flowing and there was just such an uh environment and a vibe. And also um, a lot of student groups are also setting up tables underneath. So it's also just, you know, the experience itself, like the dining, of course, um, the food quality, but also the ability for students to engage and be a part of whatever is happening on campus, whatever um is, you know, to be in the know of, of, of what's happening. I really appreciated that when I walked in and I was like, you know, cause it's not, and also Chicken Wednesday. I mean, you know, it's, it's happening and uh I, I just really appreciate the culture um as well as the, the quality of food.
Are there any other questions relating to the budget presentation?
I have a question. Do we?
Trustee Slay.
Earlier I talked about retention. And retention in addition to work environment means money.
Hmm.
How are we positioned to increase our retention?
Hmm. So we um went through a process earlier this year with the help of the state of North Carolina. They provided labor market adjustment, a labor market adjustment of fund. And we were able to strategically use that to go through and look at some of the job categories, families that we have seen traditional loss in, where those are the positions where we have the most movement or have been hardest to attract. And so we went through and increased all of those positions. Additionally, you heard me mention earlier about how we are using our vacant positions. And so in the absence of significant um increase in dollars, we have to reappropriate the dollars that, that we do have um to make sure that we're strategically using them and taking funds from a vacant position and adding it to another position or coupling two positions together to make it uh more attractive. Um, we are also, and I think this gets back to maybe something the chancellor mentioned earlier. We are working um very hard with the UNC system office through our director, our chief human resources officer to talk about the salaries that are at NCCU because we are in a tier system. And so even though we want to pay more in some cases and, and some cases actually have the funding to pay more because of the tier system, we are restricted. And so we've been working very closely with them. In fact, we are going through a salary study right now with the UNC system to look at whether the salary um salaries that they have in the various bandit classes work for us. And on our first pass um for Mr. Hill and I, we said a resounding no. And so we have been providing feedback and some strategic points about what we need to do to be able to increase those salaries. But those are all of the things that we're doing to try and work on retention.
I, I think I spoke to the board uh last meeting. I explained to you all the, the tier system and where NCCU is located in particular uh between Duke, UNC, and of course the research triangle uh which creates, you know, severe competition for us when it comes to competitive salary and certain positions. Uh, there are some positions that we, right now, we cannot fill because the salary that we are offering and not the salary that has been offered in this area. That's what she's talking about there in terms of working with uh the system uh to make sure that we can and, and the system is promised that they are looking at that and that uh, you know, HR is working with them. But that's something that does take some time. But as far as retention is concerned, uh oftentimes we are given the flexibility to do some merit increases, what she was just talking about there. The chancellor was given sudden latitude to increase certain salaries. Now, you still have to understand that when we are given the opportunity to do so, oftentimes the money comes from us. These are now funded, you know, uh mandates uh that you're given X amount of money to do that. You're given the flexibility to do it in certain areas, but you have to look for the money uh within your organization to do so. So retention is, is really key. And as you've heard, we're looking at a whole range of uh areas. One of the area that I'm particularly interested in is the foundation. Because when you look at our peers, uh UNC, NC State, because they have such large, you know, endowment, they can increase people's salaries without a constraint from the state because they are now using the state money to do that. Uh, so if you hire an executive at that level, you can go. Now thankfully, President Has has actually said that now, we have some ways to provide incentives now. Even when we're hiring people uh from the outside, we are allowed to be creative in some ways, but still we need to find the money for it. So if we can increase our endowment, uh the foundation, and then we have more flexibility to be competitive and to add um stipend um hiring, um, what do you call it? Um, um incentive, you know, signing bonos and all of that. We are allowed to do that now, but we still have to have the funds uh to do so. So that's the, the retention piece are there. Uh, and the last thing I'll say about retention is this. Until we, we are able to get to that point, there are some hooks that we cannot keep, trustee State. Uh, we lost someone to Duke, I'm not going to mention the name, but three weeks, maybe three weeks ago now. The salary that the person asked for, not only did Duke give him, give him that salary, they also added another 25,000 on top of it. And as much as people want to love NCCU, they want to serve us, they, they, many cases, they are graduates of here. But when you ask him for a hundred and 75,000 and they say, well, no, 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 we will give you even more than that. It's very hard to compete with. So we're doing everything that we can. Uh, but the region where we are is very difficult uh for us to, to do that. And we made this known to the system over and over and over again.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think, oh, oh, I, I don't think we have any more questions, Mr. Chairman.
Um, I have for the committee. Um, as we review these numbers, um, are you going to define the timeframe? And then the designated time we would reconvene?
So uh, Mr. Chairman, can uh we work with the board secretary on that too? Oh, and, and staff and chief of staff and chief of staff. Uh, and to come with the, the date that will work, we definitely don't want, today is the 20th.
Twenty six.
Twenty six.
Yeah.
And so if we, I don't want it to be, you know, submitted on the fourth, right? So I'll work with um those two officers.
Okay, so everyone needs to be in tune with the fact that this is going to be pretty timely. And so um if you don't have the documents or have access to them or having difficulty getting them, make sure you have them because we will be voting.
Going through the budget, what will we have access to? When, how will I be able to see this on the long term?
Um, it's in board, it will be in board effect, that. It's.
So I can see it in my office. Good, okay.
So it looks like we should plan for either Tuesday or Wednesday if we don't want, I mean, we don't have much time to, to really do it um today's.
Absolutely, so by the end of the day, I'll, I'll work with the staff to make sure we can get it done. And, and uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, do we need a vote on tabling the vote for today? Or are you okay with this? Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
We're going to keep trucking along here. Uh, next we have uh committee chair Allison to review the um governance comments.
Thank you, Chair, I'll be quick, we're going to truck fast here. Um, not wanting to sound like a broken record, I'm going to repeat what we discussed last time, just so uh you all will be on the same page. Um, for article five of the board of trustees bylaws, at the annual meeting, the board of trustees shall elect from its membership a chair, vice chair, and a secretary. At least 60 days prior to the annual meeting, the governance committee shall nominate at least one candidate for each office to be filled at the annual meeting. Board members who have been appointed to the board but who not have not yet been sworn in may be included in the slate of officer candidates determined by the governance committee. However, the committee may not include current board members whose terms in June 30th and who have not been reappointed to the board. Uh, the officers of the board of trustees shall be a chair, vice chair, minister secretary. These officers shall perform the duties prescribed by these bylaws. Uh, the officer shall be elected to serve a one year or until his or her successor is elected. And the term of office shall begin immediately following the election of the officers. Um, the key to this, the governance committee has got to provide in writing a report uh to the board at least 20 days prior to the annual meeting. Uh, so to put this in simple terms, uh, cause I confuse myself with that. Uh, the news board, the full board will come July 1st. Um, at that time, all those members will be eligible uh to be put on the slate. So the governance committee will likely meet in July uh to give the 60-day window before the September 27th meeting. Uh, 20 days before September 27th, at least, we will present the full slate uh by pretty much email communication to all the board to know who's on the slate. He is on the 27th, uh, we can take nominations from the floor as well as that on that date. But on the 27th of September, that's when the slate of officers will be voted on. Did that help bring it down? Okay, cool. So to that end, uh, I'm asking that you definitely think that through for yourself or if you've got a person that you would like to recommend for those offices to get that submitted to, uh, email it to me. Um, and I'm going to say no later than the first week of July because we're going to be going into that meeting for the slate uh in mid-July at the latest, if that makes sense. And so govern yourselves accordingly, think that through. But if you have any questions or concerns, please let me know at this time. Yes, uh, officers uh for sure, vice chair, of course, we know vice chair Johnson uh uh will be uh coming off as well as our one secretary, our Craggy in this meeting uh will be coming off and um our, our chairman is, is here and I'm not going to, I'm going to look straight down. And so those are the officers who are uh that we're looking at. But we do know vice chair and secretary for sure, we've got to um look at those. Any other questions? That's my report.
Thank you. Uh, next we'll have our SGA president, trustee Abbe.
Uh, good afternoon, everyone. So for the sake of time, uh, I could go ahead and start on slide 21. Uh, yes, sir. So uh, this is actually my last uh board of trustees meeting, so um I will be uh going off to New York over the summer to do an internship with Mastercard, so I'm really excited for that. So I just want to say thank you all, trustee members, uh, for giving me the opportunity uh to not only be here with you all and learn so much for each and every single one of you, uh, but just the experiences just being student body president um and just, you know, seeing everything that, you know, when I first got into this position coming to fruition. Uh, and so uh during our, during the first or second board of trustees meeting, I went over some of the things Student Government Association has done on during the fall semester. And so this uh will, this is actually the fall semester, SGA and Student Activities Board, we ended up doing a collaboration. Uh, and so this was during our game against Morgan State. And so this was to uh do breast cancer awareness month where each and every single one of our executive board members, along with uh student, uh, students who you see in the back, uh, were warping um in order to bring awareness for breast cancer. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, so this is November and uh this is something that we've been able to do. Uh, this, uh, we did an SGA student tuition fee form. A lot of students really had, uh, were concerned about um understanding tuition, tuition and fees and how, you know, that comes about. And so I just want to give a special thank you to VC Matherson uh for coming in and talking with students. So this around like 6 o'clock at night. And so just wanted to thank her uh for giving her time and opportunity uh to just share with students and answer some of their questions. Uh, Dr. Coleman as well uh came through um one, during one of our forms as well too, just to let students know about the various resources that are available and just to answer some of the concerns of uh the students. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, so this is our spring 23 programming. Uh, this is something that, you know, we've definitely wanted to push uh through our, our student body, which is the campus cleanup. Uh, chancellor, I know you tasked us with, with doing one as well too. And so this is something that we did um in January, February. And I don't believe uh we did one in March, but we will be continuing to do it um throughout the next few months. And so this was a really great honor. I actually met Vice President Kamala Harris. Uh, she came in Raleigh to talk about um the investment in small businesses, especially Latinx. And so that was really a great opportunity just to see how much investment that uh the Latinx community was able to put in uh throughout their, you know, the small businesses that we have within North Carolina. So it was really an honor to meet her um and just, you know, seeing the investment the administration has been able to put in into some of the small businesses. And so this is our Mr. uh North Carolina Central University, Josiah Russell. He had the opportunity to present at the Mr. HBC competition. Not only did he win uh first runner-up, but he also won Mr. Congeniality, I don't know how to pronounce it. But he won a lot of awards. Uh, so he did, he did have like three trophies in his hand and so I couldn't find a picture. But um, but it was a really great opportunity, not only for him, but for him to also represent uh this institution. Um, uh, next slide, please. And so this is something that the Division of uh Student Engagement and Leadership, along with Student Government Association, uh collaborated with. So uh, it was uh let, talk about it Tuesday, just giving Mr. Clem over there. Um, and it was a really great opportunity for students to just come together and just learn about, you know, the different life lessons that, you know, um, our, our speakers, um, you know, were able to uh give testimonies of and students just, you know, asking questions. It was supposed to be a taco emoji, but it didn't come through. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, this was uh council presidents uh meeting that we had in collaboration with NCC hospitality, uh, which, you know, I briefly mentioned. Um, and so this was an opportunity that NCC hospitality, along with Airmark, gave our uh council of presidents within our student organizations to just come together and just talk about their concerns, um, not only about their concerns, but what they like also about the dining service here at NCCU. And they really took the time to be able to um ask questions. Most NCC hospitality definitely made it an effort to make sure students' concerns were, were heard and offer um, you know, support and, and doing that. And so we've definitely seen a tremendous uh progress from them taking the student surveys and actually implementing it uh throughout the dining service here at NCCU. And so uh UNC HD, uh, for those who are familiar, it's a, all 17 UNC school systems, they get together at different uh campuses. for those who are familiar, it's, uh, all seventeen UNC school systems, they get together at different, uh, campuses. And, uh, these are our delegates, and so we had the opportunity to, um, actually, uh, go to the Legislative House, Legislative in Raleigh, North Carolina. So that's where House Bill forty-one was passed. Um, and so it was unfortunate, but, um, that, you know, that bill got passed, but it was a really great opportunity for our students to not only talk with, um, our representative Zach Hawkins, but also Board of Governor as well. And so that was, that was a opportunity for us to not only engage, but also represent NCCU. Uh, next slide. And so one of the things that we really wanted to do is continue promoting, uh, UNC ASG, which a lot of students may not know, uh, here on campus. Uh, but we took the time during ten forty break to share with students, uh, what ASG is all about. We gave them wristbands, some pamphlets. And we also did a SNAP initiative as well too, uh, that was done, uh, in partnership with UNC ASG, uh, to get students to, uh, to apply for EBT as well. And so a lot of, we had over seventy students, uh, you know, registered for that. And so it was really something that we'll continue to do in the future, but a, another great opportunity. Next slide, please. And so this was actually recently Council Student Body Presidents from all UNC school systems, along with, uh, the delegates from other institutions. Uh, we were able to, um, go to UNC Pembroke and Jamir Hamilton, which was here. He's actually the new UNC ASG Senior Vice President, and he'll be representing NCCU. So he's our third. Uh, Derek Sanford was one, uh, Selena Garcia was our second, and now Jamir Hamilton is our third. And so we've definitely had a tremendous representation, uh, at UNC ASG, not only on the executive level, but also on the senior levels as well too. These are some of our delegates, uh, right here on the right side. Thank you all so much for this opportunity, and I'll take any questions or, uh, comments.
I'd just like to say thank you so much for your service, your insight, uh, as far as the university and the students, uh, because we really appreciate that. That's, that can be a blind spot for us because we're not here on campus all the time. So that means a lot.
Thank you.
Uh, the second thing is let's make sure we talk before you take off. Uh, I, I have some contacts at Mastercard that may be of benefit to you.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right.
Thank you.
Love to just, um, just thank you for all the work that you've done and, um, also that, that meeting with, uh, our Vice President, Kamala Harris. I was there too. It was packed and, um, there was such, such a thing about innovation and, and business and all that. So thank you for, for just highlighting, you know, the ways that, you know, any opportunity, whether it's, you know, for Latinx business owners, but it, it, it's, it's us, right? All these opportunities, it benefits our students and also the business, uh, component of it. It was intersectional. I mean, you had business owners. One group, it was like, everybody was there, right? And, um, our representatives were there. Um, and so you, you represented us so well, um, going to that and attending that and, and so many others did. So I want to commend you for that. Um, also, as you share pictures and opportunities, um, I really love the inclusivity of, um, supporting students in holistically. Um, when you mentioned about even opportunities for, um, uh, what is it? As, uh,
ASG.
ASG, right? The, the kind of things that like will allow our students to get what they need. Um, because students are all over the spectrum, but we know that supporting them and then also then they're in positions to support. And I also just want to highlight that there's, uh, students here in the audience as well. And I don't know if there's going to be a moment to highlight, but, uh, Juan Beleda, you're here. Um, thank you for being here. Um, thank you for also like, I just love students being involved in spaces and I've seen you come out to schools as well. So I just love the, the, the idea of what you've done in your leadership, trustee, and the ways that other, um, of our alumni, alumni, uh, our, our alums, um, and our current students are, are actually representing the, um, our institution so highly in every place that they go.
Thank you so much, trustee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next we'll have our Chancellor provide an update on his report.
Good afternoon. To Chairman Holloway and, uh, members of the Board of Trustees, to staff, and all others who are either logging online, present here. Um, it's my pleasure to provide, provide a quick update uh, on the Chancellor's report. Because we've had a very long session, and I'm aware of the fact that, uh, we have to go to lunch, and we still have a, one more session. I'm going to probably just abbreviate my report and, uh, provide, I will provide a, um, much updated report in June. Um, I want to also thank Mr. Manuel Abbebe. Uh, Manu Hey, Abbebe. I want to make sure that the name is pronounced correctly. Manu Hey, Abbebe. Uh, we want to thank you for, uh, your service on the board. You have been a very, very, um, how do I say, collaborative, uh, and great, great leader for the students. You've represented their interest very well, talking to me, uh, and to many members, uh, on an ongoing basis. And so we want to thank you for your service, and we also wish you well, uh, as you embark upon your internship, uh, in New York. And, uh, we'll see you upon your return. And, uh, normally we recognize him here, but we would do that at lunch, I believe, uh, today. Um, I just want to quickly, um, give you a few updates. Some of these things are already in the many, many presentations that you have, so I'm going to just sort of move through them, uh, rather quickly. Um, as you know, we are approaching the end of the spring two thousand twenty-three semester. And, uh, so far, uh, there's been no, uh, significant challenges uh, to our student body, uh, to our institution uh, in times of COVID and otherwise. And I think that, uh, we could probably say now that COVID is in our rearview mirror. Uh, there were no significant, um, issues and, and, um, you know, breakout on campus. And, uh, I'm very thankful to all of the staff and student affairs and across the campus, uh, who are truly engaged in making sure that, uh, we are able to uh, end the semester, uh, on a successful note. Um, as you well know, um, this is the time of the year when we celebrate, um, our students who are graduating. Uh, we have the one hundred and forty-one, or forty-first commencement exercise, which will take place, exercises rather, which will take place on Saturday, May sixth, starting at eight, eight AM for the undergraduate and two PM, uh, for the graduate and professional students. At this time, uh, we have an estimate of one thousand eighty-two students who will receive degrees, including four PhD candidates uh, in integrated biosciences. Of course, that number may slide back and forth to be, you know, there are some late comers that, uh, perhaps will not finish what they need to do. So, but it's, it's a large number, uh, considering our size. And of course, the speaker for this event is, uh, the famed civil rights lawyer Benjamin Crump. Uh, many of you know very well, and, uh, and of course, the UNC, uh, Board of, uh, Governor Representatives, Dr. Pearl, uh, Paris Floyd, uh, whom you all know. She's been here many times. And of course, as well as our own trustee, Oida Coleman, uh, who will be, uh, sitting in place for the chairman. Uh, we look forward to, uh, this event, and we invite all board members who are able to come, uh, to please come, and you are also invited to lunch, uh, in between the celebrations. Uh, the university will, uh, grant a bachelor's Bachelor of Science in biomedical sciences to a fallen ego, uh, Ms. Cornisha Shaw. Uh, Ms. Shaw had a genuine and kind spirit and planned to attend graduate school to study veterinary medicine and become a practicing veterinarian, but unfortunately, um, she had an untimely, uh, passed away, and, uh, we will be providing her degree to her family. Uh, as you well know, I'm not going to spend much time on the, um, legislative, uh, uh, budget process. Many of you have been pretty much in tune with what is going on with the General Assembly. The House passed their budget. It is now, uh, the Senate's turn, and, uh, many of the initiatives that, um, uh, our system submitted for, uh, our institutions to include NCCU were in the House budget. And it is our hope that, uh, it would also, they would, it would also be reflected in the, uh, Senate budget. And hopefully, uh, they will make it through conference. Um, there were some things that we are also, uh, channeling on our own with our representatives and our friends across both aisles. Uh, I've been to, uh, the General Assembly at least four times this semester, uh, talking to various individuals. And of course, we'll see, uh, 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 when the budget is finally approved, uh, what we are able to secure, uh, on top of what the system was asking for us. There are some good news, uh, for faculty and staff in the, uh, budget. Uh, the governor, uh,'s budget, uh, reflected seven and a half percent of salary and, you know, staff employees' salary increase across the state uh, over the biennium. Um, and it's also, it was also reflected in the House budget. So we are hoping that the Senate would do the same thing, and hopefully it would make it through conference, and, uh, that would be very good for, uh, state employees. Um, as far as the enrollment, we spent so much time on enrollment this morning. Um, what I would say to you, uh, is that we are working, uh, vigorously. I mean, when I said vigorously, it was all hands on deck. Uh, not only is the Provost meeting with the Enrollment Committee, I'm, I also meet with the Enrollment Committee. And, um, on a, on a bi-weekly basis, uh, to make sure that everyone is, uh, on, on, on top of this. And we let people know that enrollment is everybody's business uh, on this campus, and we're working hard. Uh, it is my hope that with the trajectory that we have now, that we will be able to meet our target. Um, last year we were down by roughly five percent. So with the progress that we're making, I'm not going to be so optimistic to say that we'll make up that five percent uh, this time. It may take a couple of iterations before we get here, but suddenly we are on the, uh, on the rise for that. Um, there are so many notable mentions that I can't even begin to, uh, mention all of them here. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, you, some of them are, you know, given in your, um, presentations, but, you know, it's important for me to say to you that, uh, faculty and our staff are just garnering a lot of accolades and recognitions, uh, across, uh, the state and across the country. I just give you a few, uh, mentions here. Uh, Attorney Malik Edwards, who's the Intervening of Law School, was named to Lawyers of Color Power List of two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, of course, you heard earlier that, uh, uh, NCCU Jazz Ensemble won the first place at Jack Rudy Jazz Championship in New York City, and they are now off to, uh, California again, um, for another invitation. Um, NCCU also, uh, was selected as one of twenty-two first scholars institutions advancing the outcomes of first generation students through, uh, Student Affairs, and that is a, a big deal. So I want to, uh, uh, give, uh, kudos to, uh, the Student Affairs and Academic Affairs team on their work. Um, we, um, also, um, next slide. Uh, in, 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 in line with that, I'm also happy to, uh, to say to you that the two, two twenty, twenty-three UNC Board of Governors Award for Excellence Teaching also came from NCCU, Dr. Darlene Everhard Book, uh, the Associate Professor of, uh, Department of Human Sciences, uh, was named, uh, as the, um, uh, recipient of the Excellence in Teaching Award. As well as, within the university, we also, uh, named three other professors to receive the university award for teaching, uh, excellence. Next slide, please. You've also heard, uh, a number of, 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 of the work that, uh, has been done here, uh, at NCCU. Even though, uh, we talked about areas where we need to strengthen and incorporate and foundation given, we know that we've got to do more work over there, but I would say to you that when it comes to sponsored research, uh, NCCU is pulling way above its, its weight. Uh, so far this year, you saw the number there. Uh, our faculty members have generated more than, more than forty-one million dollars in sponsored research. Uh, that is significant, twenty-one, twenty-one million, about where you were last year. Uh, the, what this does for us is give us that FNA, that indirect cost that allows us to be able to do things that we cannot do with state funds. So it's really very important, uh, for our faculty and staff to continue to fire in this direction. And of course, we've listed, we've listed other, uh, uh, grants that are secured, uh, by our faculty and staff. Next slide, please. Of course, on the, um, uh, Capitol update, you've heard, uh, Ms. Matheson gave all of the update, and I think we've talked, um, elaborately on the areas where we're still having some challenges, uh, such as the twenty-four-seven. I'm not going to spend time on that anymore, uh, because we've talked about that. But, uh, uh, otherwise, we are making progress in all of our renovations and, uh, uh, that are scheduled on campus and demolition. People really are working very hard, uh, across the board. Next slide, please. And normally, we, we, we do always have a student spotlight because, as we've said earlier, that's the reason why we're here. Uh, student success, and I'm happy to spotlight Mr. Juan Vade Vasquez, who's a junior in the School of Business. Uh, he's majoring in Entrepreneurship and Management. Uh, this fellow has been on the Dean's List Honors Program, Football Eagle Excellence for highest GPA, member of NCCU. I mean, member of, uh, Latino Mill Initiative, delivered more than a hundred and twenty hours. He's just firing in different direction. Uh, and, um, he's the most important thing I hear is, as an entrepreneur, you see what he's doing, is working on getting a kind of a special coffee from his native, uh, Peru to be distributed here. Uh, so if you're looking for somewhere to invest your money, this is the fellow. Uh, so I'm going to ask him to, uh, uh, to come forward and just give us, uh, a few comments about what he's doing, how excited he is, and then of course, we'll, we'll proceed from there. Yes, Mr. Miss, Miss, Mr. Vasquez.
How's everybody doing? Thank you for having me. Um, uh, good afternoon, members of the Board of Trustees, Mr. Chancellor, and all my fellow Eagles. Um, I stand in front of you to tell you that I came to the US about seven years ago without speaking any English. I graduated high school with a four point five GPA and as a member of the Honors Society. I was accepted, um, to Central. I was accepted for the Honors Program, and I was fortunate enough to receive a football scholarship. Oh, since then, it's been three years where I've been living at Eagle Landing, representing NCCU in every stage and becoming the first ever Peruvian to win a national championship. Thank you, thank you. Um, I came in the same class as Mr. Manu here, right here, and, uh, he's done an incredible job for our, uh, community. Some things I'd like to point out about myself, since I've been here at Central, is that, first of all, I live by the standard that our head coach, uh, Trey Oliver has set on us, which is be great, be great in the classroom, be great in the football field, be great in everything. And that's what I try to accomplish day by day, right? I've been able to be selected for the Studing, um, Scholar Athlete of the Year of, uh, for twenty-twenty-two. Uh, I've been selected just two years ago, uh, two days ago for the Shakira Reed, which is, uh, presented to the which is uh presented to the uh Studing Athlete with the Most Community Service in the School and many other and many other awards, but does nothing compare with the um with the community engagement I have with many kids across the Norahna uh community, which uh two about three, three weeks ago, I was fortunate enough to talk under twenty-three, twenty-third um yearly convention for uh Hispanics, where I had the chance to talk and represent our university in front of more in in front of more than five hundred students. But the reason why I'm here today is to tell you that I came to the U S with goals and with clear dreams. I'm really by, I'm thanks to um a push from a recently open center here, the Entrepreneurs Center. I was able to meet uh Mr. Fucy and tell him a little bit of my story. I truly believe that Peru uh together with Ethiopia are the number one producers of organic coffee in the world and explorers as well. That's why I'm here in front of you to show what's the future, the future for the coffee, right? It's called Apapahuí, Apapahuí Coffee, which is in a native language called Our Father. I'm a, if you're God, man, I I I respect God, I'm a God follower, and that's why the comes, the name comes from it. So let me tell you a little, a little bit about this. The higher the coffee bean is um cultivated is the better, right? Peru, where I be big, I'll, where I'll get the coffee from, it's about a uh fifteen hundred at altitude above the sea level, right? Which is it mean, it means a lot. But why, why am I trying to get into the coffee business if there is already a big coffee industry for it, right? Why am I, I'm I'm going to be the smallest fish ever? Well, tell, let me tell you something. The pro, there is different process for coffee. My process in in particular is called honey process, which is not a process where uh has entered the U S yet, right? This coffee, uh it has more of a Swedish, like a fruity, like a chocolate flavor to it. So it's not as as strong as the regular coffee. That's why the study market I have um conducted shows me that this this coffee will be for our future generation, right? And for our beautiful ladies everywhere of all ages. That's why that's gonna be the market I'll be uh pursuing. Uh, and this is one, this is the one of the packages what, how I'm gonna come out. But my biggest thing is to create the inst- the instant that where you just have the coffee ready, like a tea, that you can put the water on it, already put it on your cup. That's my biggest dream and how I'm gonna attack the the market. Well, I have a plan, I have a p- uh a product, and I have a vision. What am I missing, right? That's why I I'm in front of you all to tell you that I'm, first of all, looking for a mentor. And second of all, I'm looking for an investor. Right? I just wanted to say, I I I wish I can find that person or those people that can write, that can guide me into the right direction to continue to be great. Thank you so much.
You see why we are so excited by one. Um, I mean, this young man, I don't know where he finds the time as a football player Dean's list, Honors list, and doing all the things that he's doing and also pursuing his his entrepreneurship dream. Uh, this is why I think NCCU uh is one of perhaps the only institution that nurtures diversity on our campus. And how important it is, this young man is going to be the Starbucks of tomorrow. Uh, and uh so we are so happy for you and congratulation on all of your accomplishments. And uh just remember, you make that money, you need to give some back to NCCU. And uh before I uh I'll conclude my, uh, are there any questions for Mr. Vasquez? Okay. Don't leave yet, okay? I want you to hang around. Any, any other questions for him? Okay, thank you. But uh before I conclude my report, I do want to make a quick comment and I'll be, and I'll be done. Um, I realize that um we are making some improvement and changes in the way that we deliver uh our board meetings. At this age and time, it's quite important for us as an institution to understand how to manage waste and how to be more effective. We've relied on paper for a very long time, and it's costly. If you are part of the UNC system, there is no printing of one single paper for board members. I know we still have some perfection to make here, but our goal is to make it as simple as you can get. One touch, and you are able to get the materials so that we don't have to, you know, uh be printing a lot of papers. So I'm asking you to bear with us uh as we make this this improvement. We want the board meeting to be more professional, to more businesslike, and that's why you see uh what we're doing. And I do want to really acknowledge our team who who've been working tremendously to make this shift. Uh, Dr. Edmonds with uh our staff in the office, with our I T, uh Ms. Kraus, and our team and others across the campus, making sure that, you know, your board experience is is effective and is productive. And so I would ask you uh to bear with us as we move and transition into this electronic format uh of the Board of Trustees meeting. With that, uh that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman, uh subject to any questions that you all may have.
Chancellor, I I am just in awe and and I have so much gratitude to your vision um for the ways that you continue to, you know, think about all the aspects. I I also don't know where you have the time to be involved to the to all the details and 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 um it it is definitely an honor, you know, to to be a part of your board. I will just say uh when it comes to uh you know, everything that you shared, um I'm really touched also about the ways that we're you mentioned last point about being environmentally conscious as well. Um, you know, I'm having conversations in community. Um, North Carolina Century University sits on a creek, uh Third Fort Creek. And so that there's, there are some conversations about like, you know, how all of this ties into like us just realizing like our connectivity with, you know, the resources, the natural resources that we have. We have, you talked about the grants and the research, and you highlighted somebody, uh, one of our professors from the Earth Science Department. And I'd love to continue to see how they also help us tell the story of North Carolina Century University, our creeks, our our topography, you know, like where we sit, you know, we are, we are in a very unique position. Um, we also know that there's going to be some changes happening downstream with uh, you know, the the uh HUD. And um when it comes to everything that's going to be changing in the future. So I just, I just appreciate like uh your your direction and everything that you um have shared and and would love to continue seeing more also from from all the highlights and how it all connects to the work, right? The full work.
Thank you, thank you, Trust of All Darius, we appreciate it, thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Chancellor, I really appreciate it. Um, a lot of hard work, and to you and the staff, uh we appreciate it. Uh, one thing to add as far as, don't forget, our next board meeting is June twenty-eighth, so get that on your calendars. And with that, we'd like to go into closed session pretty quick here.
Um, Mr. Chair, pursuant to NCGS one forty-three dash three eighteen dot eleven A one, to prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential pursuant to the law of this state or of the United States or not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter one thirty, one thirty-two of the general statutes, a move that we go into closed session.
Sorry, it's been moved improperly second. All in favor? Uh, so moved.